We'll get us going here. Commissioner Manas, would you like to, such a special day, would you do invocation for us? Let's strengthen our faith with unity today. It's a unifying day. Okay, so I think we are ready to go live with mics.
Did someone check on the heat?
Okay, can somebody do that first? Okay, I think, we'll ask Tim to get that word to Juan. Commissioner Chesney would like just, will you check on the heat?
It feels hot in here, but, okay.
Okay, so let me gavel us in today. And welcome, everybody that's here in court. I'm calling us to order, and I'd like to ask at this time for you to rise for the invocation. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Texas flag. Commissioner Manas.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for today. We thank you for another day of life and for the community that we live in. We thank you for this special day, Lord, for the transition of power, the peaceful transition of power for our country. No matter how we feel about the election outcome, we just pray, Lord, that we know that this is your will, and pray for guidance and peace for our country, for protection for our leaders, for discernment that they make the decisions that are based on their beliefs, based on ethics, and on their upbringing. Dear God, we pray for today, for this court, that we may also lead and make decisions based on your guidance and your will. And pray that you guide all the men and women of Nuasis County that work for this county, and also all the employees and all the people of this county who are battling and dealing with COVID. We pray for healing for those who are sick. We pray for the healing of hearts and souls of those who have lost a loved one. We pray, Lord, as we continue to receive these resources, that they come quickly and swiftly, so that we may just share them with the entire community. We thank you for the efforts that have been put out now, and we pray for the efforts that will continue to help battle this horrible virus. We thank you for all the blessings you've given us, in your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and one.
Judge, would it be okay just to do a couple of housekeeping real quick? Is that all right with you? I just was gonna...
Flower Bluff.
Well, no, I was actually gonna go ahead, I don't know if they're here or not, but I was just gonna make a motion to table a couple of things, so that if anybody was waiting on those things, if that's all right with you.
It is. Just, if you wouldn't mind, speak a little louder.
Sorry, we'll try that, is that on? Mine says unmute mic, is that...
And Tim, we're gonna get to you, we're just doing a quick safe, a quick safety, a quick housekeeping.
Yes, ma'am, I notified as well.
Judge, I would move that we table under Public Works B1 until the next meeting.
B is in Barbara?
B is in, yeah, there you go. B is in Barbara 1. I'm sorry? B1 under the regular agenda, wanna table that till the next meeting?
What's the date on that? Tyner, Feb 6?
February 10.
Feb 10.
But we may have a special...
We may have one before, so we'll do it whenever the next meeting is. Whenever the next meeting is, okay? Which, the next one?
And you wanna vote on that, or you wanna do a vote?
Oh, okay.
However you wanna do it.
Sure, that's a motion. I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
And then I'd also like to table 3A4.
Let me move back, 3A4.
I'm not sure, I'm just gonna take that right now.
All right, to the next meeting, sir?
Or indefinitely, maybe, I'm not sure. Well, I'll see when I'll put that back on. I'm sorry, 3A4.
3A4.
3A4, regular agenda.
And I will second that, and we will, just put it for Feb 10, and then we could always not have it then.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, we need a date.
Okay.
And motion and a second on item 3A4 to table to Feb 10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Judge.
Post same sign, those are the only two, so if you were a part of those agenda items, we don't want you to be here a long time, now that you know. Now we'll move to our safety briefing with Timothy Everest.
Good morning, Judge.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, one second. Yes, thank you. Look at you helping me, thank you so much.
That's my bad, I jumped here, that's on me. Sorry.
This is what happens when we go out of order.
My bad, I did.
No worries, my fault. Everyone, let us reflect for the clerk, that today is January 20th, 2021. It's an important day for America, and here as well in Nuasis County. We are here in Nuasis County Commissioners' courtroom, 901 Leopard. The time is, let me look here, 9:15, although we probably clerk started a little while ago. Call it maybe 9:10 a.m. And I do certify that all commissioners are present, and therefore a quorum has been established. Thank you so much, County Attorney. We appreciate that, keeping us straight. Timothy, would you give us our safety briefing?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, this safety brief's gonna be a little bit different due to the world circumstances today. We're meeting in the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse. For anyone in the atrium area, the restrooms will be located on the right-hand side next, past the Human Resources Office. There's a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are also five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located in the atrium next to the Human Resources Office. Participants responsible for dialing 911 in the event of emergency is Connie. Participants who are CPR certified. In attendance this morning are Dale and myself, although anyone can render aid. In the event that the firearm goes off, we will, the court will remain in place till that is determined whether there's a need or not to evacuate the building. The doors will remain, half the doors will remain open for precaution. Should there be a need to shelter in place, you will shelter place here, the doors will be closed and secured in the event. Our shared topic is today, that looking around the courtroom this morning, out in atrium area, we are in COVID-19, we are in compliance with COVID-19 measures and social distancing practices. That concludes my brief, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. I always want to add about our workforce, and we're thanking, thankful for everybody participating in all their safety practices, but just want to reiterate, please make sure that if you're not feeling well, that you stay home. It's really critical that we keep our workforce intact and safe. So if you're not feeling well, and you feel like you have those symptoms, we do have COVID testing available, and we really want you to utilize it. At this time, I'll ask Tyner to present any public comment. Do you have a sheet for me that I could, oh, here it comes. And let's go ahead and look online and see if there's anybody that might want to be a part of public comment here today.
I recognize the people online, and I don't believe they have public comment. Y'all tell me if I'm wrong, but I see agenda items, and I see Holden, Hopkins.
So honestly, I don't see any here as well. I will ask a quick look around, Deputy Vazquez, but seeing no one, we'll proceed to the next arena here, which is, you know, I think we have the Flower Bluff Hornets outside, so if it's all right with our emergency management crew, I've got the thumbs up on timing. Let's move to accepting the following minutes of January 6, 2021, and move right into H, and then we'll come back to F, Commissioners. How about a motion for the approval of January 6, 2021 minutes? Have you had a chance to review, and is there a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Manas. Do I have a second? Second for Commissioner Manas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, and now let us move to H1. Specially with us today are members of the Flower Bluff Lady Hornets volleyball team, and we welcome them. And I would ask that Commissioner Chesney and Tyner lead us here in this important recognition. Do you want to just kind of set the stage? Tyner's got some official words.
Tyner, if you want to read the resolution, then I'll save my comments for after you read the resolution.
Sounds good. Ladies, welcome. You're free to, yeah, sit in the space, in a way that promotes space and social distance, and then a few of you can stand, thanks. We're excited that you're here. And I thought about you. I got your color. Which is hard for me, because I went to Ray. But I'm really proud of you guys, okay.
If I may proceed, Judge?
Absolutely.
This is recognizing the Flower Bluff Lady Hornets volleyball team for their successful regular 2020 season and undefeated district champions. Whereas the Flower Bluff Lady Hornets volleyball team, led by head coach Carol Wallace, finished a successful 2020 season with an overall record of 21 and 1. Whereas the Lady Hornets volleyball program went undefeated within their district for an overall record of 16 to 0. Whereas the Lady Hornets made it to the 2020 volleyball 5A Regions 3 and 4 tournaments, finishing with the best record in school history. Whereas Carol Wallace, who has been the head coach for the Lady Hornets for 11 years now, notched a huge career milestone this year by reaching her 300th career win. Whereas members of the Lady Hornets volleyball team were honored as follows. Ariana Gonzalez, honorable mention, Academic All District. Harley Elam, Academic All District. Amanda Stotts, honorable mention, Academic All District. Callie Nims, MVP, Academic All District. Lauren Fuller, honorable mention, Academic All District. Patton Sanders, First Team All District, Academic All District. Harley Gillespie, Academic All District. Emery Jeffers, Academic All District. Michaela Palmer, First Team All District, Academic All District. Megan White, Academic All District. Callie Freeman, Academic All District, Newcomer of the Year. Hayston Guest, Second Team All District, Academic All District. Kennedy Orzekowski, First Team All District, Academic All District. Katie Garren, Second Team All District, Academic All District. Emily Mayo, Manager. Whereas coaching staff for the Flower Bluff Girls volleyball team is head coach Carol Wallace, varsity assistant Kristen Rodriguez, assistant coach Andrea Hutchins, assistant coach Floresta Williams Bassey. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County that the court hereby recognizes the Flower Bluff Lady Hornets volleyball team for their athletic accomplishments and achievements towards a very successful 2020 season.
Judge, so moved.
I've got a motion, and I will second, and we've got some good discussion.
Absolutely. Judge, thank you, and I'm gonna ask the coach and the captain or captains to come up and talk to after I say a couple of things, but I just really wanted to take a minute, you know, it has always been such an honor to represent Flower Bluff and the Flower Bluff School District, because it is undoubtedly, without question, and it's not just because I say it, it's because it is, that one of the best school districts in all of Texas. And you should be very proud of that, and you should be very proud of the achievements that you've achieved with this season. It's been daunting for athletes and students to go through what we've all had to go through with this pandemic. It has been more difficult than ever to live any kind of normal life, much less play sports, and have contact with others, and the extra that you and your coaches and your parents had to go through this year even makes this season a lot sweeter. You probably didn't get to play the number of matches you would have normally played. I know that's happened to us in basketball, and that's been, you know, I know that's frustrating, especially for seniors who don't get a chance to do this again. But you will never, ever have this taken away from you. You will never, ever have this season not be on the record books. And it is probably 10 times the achievement, not just the record that you had and the success that you had, not only on the court, but in the classroom, but it's probably 10 times the achievement just because of everything we've had to go through in this world. The sacrifices that you've had to make, the sacrifices your parents had to make, your coaches had to make, the school had to make, all the people at the school, the people who had to clean the courts and wipe the balls off, and just the things that, wow, are, you know, ridiculous that we have to do, but is part of what we have to do. So the extra pride that I have, and I know this court has, for all of you ladies who have accomplished so much during such a tough time, wow, is all I can say. I mean, you know, unless you win it all, everybody's gonna have one loss. You guys almost did win it all, and had an amazing season to go undefeated as far as you went, and to do as well as you did. And I know how hard it is at Flower Bluff to keep your grades up and everything else. So, you know, on behalf of all of Nuasis County, and on behalf of all of the folks that I represent in precinct 4, we are so, so very proud of what you've accomplished. I'm so happy that we got to bring you down here. We didn't, we had recognitions last year that we didn't get to do, and that was really a bummer, because we love doing this. We love this part of our jobs, to be able to bring the people that we represent down here and say, "Great job," and "Congratulations." And sometimes we think, you know what, let's just end our meeting right now, because we feel so good about you and what you've done, and we always get to start off. Sometimes I think we ought to end our meetings like this, but then you'd have to sit and wait all day, and it wouldn't work. But this is always such a great way to start a meeting, and we're just so very proud of you, so congratulations. And again, I'd certainly like the coach, because what a coaching legend she is in her own right, and to say some words, and your captains, and I'm sure other members of the court may have some things to do too. But I want to congratulate you, and we have a lot of things that we do, that we, you know, we take a lot of time on things. And we need to take time for things like this. And we need to take time to recognize the good that is going on, and y'all have been just such a positive light, not just as athletes, but as human beings. So congratulations for all your success. We're very proud of you, and so happy that you were able to be down here today. Coach, or...
Coach, welcome.
Callie, come on. Thank y'all so much for having us here today. It truly has been an honor to be able to be here and recognized. I know we've all been through so much this season, and these kids, we've been practicing since June, on and off, just with the new COVID guidelines. It has been definitely such a challenge for them, but I want to say that they rose up in more ways than I think sometimes we even did as adults. And every day could be something new, a new, like, hey, we're gonna have to do this today. Hey, we don't get to go in the locker room today. Hey, we've got to do this. And the rules changed, what UIL made some adjustments, and they just took it and ran with it. I had no idea how this season would go. We lost a lot of really good kids, we were really successful last year. And they just were resilient and rose up. And not only are they just amazing kids on the court, but off the court. The way they treat each other, the way that they are role models. I know I have a little girl, and I would put any of them with them, and so my daughter can be just like them. I hope that they, that, you know, they know how special people they are. We had such a good year, but just the cohesion and the family that they brought, I think they really displayed what Flower Bluff is about, which is our class and our pride and our heart. So I also think that it's important that they're recognized for that. They had a lot of South, all South Texas honors that didn't get put on there. And we just really became such a unique family. I think this will go down for one in the books, not just for our record, but like he was saying, the memories and how they overcame all the obstacles that they had this year and the changes. It really helped create us as people and changed us. So I'm very proud of them, and I'm thankful, and I couldn't have done it. I have my staff on the sides over here. They are the backbone of it, I just show up for the games, that's what I say. But really, they do the legwork behind the scenes. So I'm grateful we have a great administration. So thank you so much again for having us and for recognizing these wonderful things these young ladies did.
And Coach, I'm gonna give you this resolution to take, but I'm also gonna, I want to get those extra honors that we didn't have a chance, because I know some of those came out after we did the resolution. So if you could, if you wouldn't mind sending those to me, and I'll get this amended, and I'll get it framed, and that way you could have a nice copy, and I'll even get a copy for all the girls to take too. So I'll give you this one, but I want to know, I want you to know, we're gonna, we're gonna get it to where it's nice and got all the honors, because we want all those honors to be on that resolution, so we'll get that amended.
Okay, thank you so much.
Captain, would you like to say a few words on behalf of your team?
That's what she wants. This year was one of the best years I've had at the school with the girls. We made a lot of memories and built bonds together. And I was surprised how far we were gonna make it. But as the, like, season went on, we grew, and we became stronger, and our chemistry became better. And, I don't know, as a senior, I'm gonna miss y'all. I really had fun with y'all.
Thank you. Your thoughts with us? And Coach, you really just articulated exactly the sentiment, I think, and the pride that we feel up here when we get to recognize student athletes, because they are really going to wind up being the leaders in every sector. I just read that 80% of CEOs were once a college athlete. That doesn't really surprise me, though, if you really think about it, because it's the skill sets. And let's face it, do you do it because it's easy? This year, was it hard? You bet it was. But do you do anything because it's easy? No, you do it because you love it, and that's why you're good at it, because it's pure. And it's actually honest to you. You're being so true to yourself when you're out there digging as hard as you do. So I am just proud always when we have a school inside Nuasis County that excels in any sport and any arena. But for you guys to be perfect inside your district is really quite remarkable. So I too congratulate you, and as a female, I can just say that little girls everywhere will look up to you. So keep living the example that your coach, your administrators, your teachers, and your parents have really instilled upon you, because you have no idea how somebody younger in that elementary school is looking up and saying, "I want to be just like her." And for those of you that are gonna go on to college and play athletics, I really wish you the best. I have a niece who plays volleyball in college, and it's been an amazing experience, and they've also had challenges. And this unfortunate scenario that we find ourselves, worldwide pandemic, is going to continue. But let it not deter you, let it inspire you. Inspire you to let nothing ever get in your way. The next time you have a challenge, you're gonna remember this moment, and you use it, and you make the most of it. This is why everything, they say, there is a season for all things. This was a season to test our grit, and you have completely passed the test. So thank you so much for being with us. Take back all our good wishes to your school. And as Commissioner Chesney says, we're gonna get you copies of everything that include all those great honors. In fact, have we had all-state honors come out yet? Okay, so we want everything on there, so that would be wonderful. Commissioners, I know you join me in your well wishes, and at this time, the way to do that properly is, all those in favor of passing this resolution, please say with a resounding aye. Aye. Aye.
Judge, if we could do a picture too, if we can get, if everybody's okay with that? I mean, if that's okay for everybody to...
Sure, that's why I wore the maroon.
Yeah, we'll do it quick, and we'll...
Why don't you orchestrate that, Commissioner?
Yeah, why don't, ladies, if y'all can come up here in the well, and we'll do that, and I'll come down. I think the rest of the commissioners will probably stay up here, and that's up to however they want to do it. But we'll do it quick, so that we're not violating any rules, whatever, I'm gonna go down there, but whatever.
Well, I'm in the middle, so I've got a good spot. You want to go down? Girls, yeah. I wanted to see your mask, they look great. Awesome. Great, okay, so, no, no, I'll stand up. Y'all are so tall, but I'm gonna stand up. Somebody's got a good camera, so, all right, I'll find a, I'll hold here.
Can everybody see the camera?
Yeah.
One, two, three, go. One, two, three, go. You want to check out, Commissioner? Anybody else?
Tyler, did you get it, Tyler?
Everybody see me? Take one more. One, two, three, go, okay.
Thanks, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Coach. Appreciate that. Okay. So at this time, I'm gonna proceed, we have the January 2021 Employee of the Month. And it's always exciting to be able to stop and say thank you and recognize someone who's done extraordinary work. And in this case, we have Kevin Kishnik to help us talk about his wonderful employee. Wait, I think, is Kevin in the hallway? Tyner? This happened last court, too. I know, he probably just needs a little time to get over here, but... Is he coming? Okay, well, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start the process, and let's see if we can encourage him to, Tara, if you'd be so kind, would you call tax assessor? Kishnik? Okay, so, you know, we started this program, and you get different varieties of nominations. Sometimes you get these beautiful letters that are written by department heads, but sometimes it comes from a colleague, or sometimes it comes even from a citizen. And so what inspired this department head, who happens to be Kevin Kishnik, one of our electeds, not a department head, but an elected, our tax assessor, was an incredible note that he received from a citizen, which I would like to read. "This morning," she writes, "I visited the motor vehicle department at the courthouse to transfer the title of my father's vehicle to my name. Helen helped me and was so pleasant in understanding. I have limited experience, you see, in handling these types of transactions, as my father always tended to them for me. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate her friendly attitude and efficiency in handling the title transfer. She helped ease my anxiety and even provided some advice when I realized I did not have the hardware for my front license plate. Sometimes, all we need is a little friendliness. Thank you for all you do and your department each day for its citizens. You are so appreciated." And it sighed Cynthia. And what I wanted to say is that I've been preaching this at our vaccination sites, that sometimes it's the little things. It's just being kind and nice and friendly really makes people calm and at ease, and it brings peace to people in the craziness that is our life. People sometimes come to this courthouse, and they're scared. They're scared because I don't know the processes that they're about to embark upon. And what really gives me such pride is that on this particular day, a member of our staff cared enough to not just bring this woman's anxiety, take this woman's anxiety away, but she went that extra mile, so much so that she wrote to the tax assessor. So because of that, those kind, that act of kindness that probably is emulated every single day in her work, Kevin Kishnik nominated, and today we recognize as the Commissioners' Court, Ms. Helen Smith, in recognition for outstanding performance, productivity, and dedication of service. Signed this 6 of January 2021. Remember, we were a little late, so the date is a little off. And so we wanted to congratulate Helen, and... And so we wanted to congratulate Helen and thank her for being such a great employee down in motor vehicles. And we also wanted to thank all of her colleagues, because I know it's a team business down there. And please, we welcome your comments.
Hello, my name is Rafael Benavides from the Nuasis County Tax Assessor Collector's Office. Mr. Kishnik is offsite at an attorney's office right now.
Understood.
Dealing with a lawsuit, so he couldn't be here today. He did ask to table the resolution. I'm not sure if I can just accept it on her behalf or...
Sure, we'll just, we'll hold, we'll hold. I like repeating good things, so I have no problem at all. And rather than complete the transaction, Tyner, we'll just hold. We don't even need to table it, I don't think. We'll just bring it back and honor her and the next employee of the month as well in February.
Judge, that she's going to want a full month of the employee parking spot?
I bet she will. We will hold.
We'll table.
Okay.
Or you can just give her the parking spot now. I mean, how to start using that?
She gets an extra week. Okay, thank you so much. Do you need a formal motion?
Motion to table?
Thank you. And I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. After this, I'll move right back to Melissa in Emergency Management. We'll finish this particular section. It also gives us great pride to recognize the county auditor and his staff for excellence in financial reporting as presented by the Government Finance Officers Association for its CAFER. That's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019. Now, what makes this special is that they always get it. It's kind of like the Chicago Bulls when Michael Jordan was there. They just always win it. And why? Because they're so good at it. But we should never take it for granted that they always do such excellent work, because it takes a lot to get to this level. And I would like for Nuasis County to recognize Dale Ashley, our auditor, but his entire staff, and ask him to say a few words about it. And I'll showcase this beautiful certificate. And as I said, it's for the achievement of excellence in financial reporting.
Thank you, Your Honor. That is a very high standards for a lot of the requirements for financial accounting. This is a level that a lot of counties get. For your knowledge, this is our 27th year in a row.
Wow.
And we expect to continue this process, even though the accounting standards change every year. And it's where we get challenging that we need to interpret how the new laws and new functions apply. As you said, it's not just me. Unfortunately, they require us to put in one name on the application. But my entire staff and entire county should be grateful and knowing that we live to high standards in our accounting financial standards to make sure you know that the numbers that we provide you are accurate and reliable. And my staff works hours and hours tirelessly to try to make sure we live this. Sometimes I give them a hard time, but that's what I should do. And, but everyone we have on my staff knows the requirements that we have and how much we need to do this. And also, I can't think enough of our external auditors, that they come in to make sure that we're in compliance as well. So there's a lot of people that go into getting this award, but we are grateful that we are accepting it for the county. But we know, we will continue it. As you said, we will fight to get this thing every year, and we don't expect to stop.
I know you won't. It just, and not just the excellence of the work, we're changing the format, aren't we? And that, I don't know if you got recognized for that, but if you, if there's ever an award for innovative, you should apply for it. Because it's not just that the work is excellent, it's that, to me, we're making it more friendly to the citizen. And it needs to be, Dale.
When we're doing that, there's several levels we can do. This is just the main detailed financial accounting report. We're in the process of putting what they call a personal activity financial report, which means it's more general and very thinner. But we haven't quite got there yet, but we're working on it. We should get that, and it's called a PAFER instead of a CAFER. But we're working on trying to get that started. And that's something else we can submit for recognition. So this is just something we want to continue to do and try to make sure that this county is represented in good standards with our accounting policies and procedures.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you so much. It was information only for us today. So now I'll move back to F1 and 2 and ask Melissa Mungia, our Emergency Management Coordinator, forgive me, to come and share with you some of the updates. We've got quite a few, actually, on item number 1. And proceed then to item number 2 as soon as she finishes. Melissa, welcome.
Good morning, Judge, and Commissioners, and good morning, Commissioner Hernandez. I haven't had a chance to meet you face to face, but I did see you out at our site. So I'm glad to see that you went out there to see what we have, what amazing site we have going on. So right now, our efforts with COVID-19 are in vaccination. We opened what's now called the Coastal Bend Regional Mass Vaccination Center. We have a really, really, really great effort that's happening out there in four operational days. So we ran Monday, we ran Tuesday, we got an allocation earlier than anticipated. So we were able to run also Friday and Saturday. So in four operational days, we did 9,000 vaccinations. And that's truly, it's truly a remarkable feat. So as we're on the note of highlighting, you know, our employees and how amazing they're doing, I think it's incredibly important to highlight the employees that are working at this site. We have guys and ladies going out there at 4:30 in the morning and staying till the very end, and they're not going to stop. They haven't stopped since the beginning of this disaster. So it's incredible to see. It's really about digging deep. It's about them being passionate about what they do, and that's why we're able to pull something like this off, as well as the coordination between the City of Corpus Christi, Nuasis County, our Joint Public Health, and Robstown, and all the other folks that are assisting us. So that would be the numbers that we run. Right now, we are preparing to run one day, which will be tomorrow. We have an allocation that we are anticipating delivery today. And that's going to be 5,000 in one day. And that's to basically test our site's threshold. I think that the expansion of vaccinations in one day will give us more days as we start to get into second doses. It will give us more days available to perform a first or second dose, when we know that 11 days from now, those 9,000 that we vaccinated will be disseminating second doses. But we'll also be disseminating first doses, and they'll also be moving through the phases and opening the next phase, and then opening the next phase. So we have to be ready for all of those moving parts. Also, we got updated yesterday that there's going to be a City of Corpus Christi mass vaccination site that's running, being run by Driscoll Children's Hospital. So they'll be the administrators. And this is another site that's going to help not only alleviate the wait times at our site, but also address a different population as well, people that can't wait so long in a drive-through. So this joint effort should be another really amazing, amazing feat. So right now, it's just really about the vaccinations, right? We don't know what our allocation's always going to be, and we don't know when it's going to come. We had a lot of changes, and I hope anybody that's listening, from the public especially, recognizes that there's a lot of variables outside of our control on this. And so, yes, you'll see many changes that we put out in press conferences or press releases regarding our drive-throughs, the amount we're going to do, how we're going to do it, what day we're going to do it. And I just hope you remain patient and understand that those changes are coming from somewhere else. And we're just, we're working to fit that into our site and our operations. Does anybody, just based on that, have any questions right now?
I do, yes.
And forgive me, Commissioner, I just want to make one small correction. Is that even though we were ready to run tomorrow, we, the only way we run is if we do receive the vaccine. I just want to make that clear. We haven't received it yet. And so if you hear that we're not running tomorrow, it's because the vaccine didn't come in. That's all. Just, it's really more of a clarification.
And that's why that flexibility and understanding is so important. Because we've said it now, on Thursday, we're ready to go. But if the allocation doesn't arrive on time, we're going to have to move the date again. So it's just important to stay in tune. NuasisKnows.com, you can find all of the information that you need to help you with the clarification of those changes. Commissioner?
So I thank you all for the updates that we continually get through the city. City Manager Zenoni, who sends us updates, in addition to our staff here, you, Melissa, and your staff. And it, this is, I mean, this is a lot for us to stay on top of, because it's constantly changing, like you all are saying. I mean, we're, you know, the original statement was, well, there'll be shots, but they'll be delayed because of the weather. Well, it doesn't matter what the weather happens today, because we don't have the shots. I mean, I was trying to explain that to a lot of people through text messages and through social media yesterday, especially because they were upset, saying, "Well, the weather's not going to be that bad." I said, "Well, it's a moot point, because we don't have the shots." A lot of my questions were answered, and I thank you for sharing it, because then we got to turn around and share that with the public. I mean, we're all doing it, but, you know, when we're approached individually or however, you know, we need to all be on that same message as well, that, you know, there is an expansion of site locations that they are, you know, we are trying to expand it beyond the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds is the hub, though, because we're serving so much of the area, not just Nuasis County. I have people from Corpus Christi ask, "Well, why don't we have one here?" Well, it's not just the residents here, it's the residents in Nuasis County and all the other areas that don't have shot, you know, availability of shots yet. I know Clayburg and some of the other counties are starting to finally get it. And of course, to remind the public, those that are listening, I mean, the shot locations that have been given a few days ago, I think they were put out on a press release, in a joint press release, with all the different pharmacies and clinics that are here in the area, that people can constantly go back and check to see if there's availability. And that TIDAM website is great. I don't know if anyone has it saved, but I've saved it on my phone. Because on the TIDAM map, Department of Emergency Service, or Emergency Management, you can see the entire state with all the different colored dots. And they'll tell you, is there a major hub? Or is it a clinic? Or is it facilities offering shots? And do they have them, or do they not? And the ones that are colored, I think maybe blue, I don't remember what color they are. You click on that, and it'll actually show you the dosage, which I've been seeing is very helpful. Some are a few days old, but I saw one the other day. I think the last time I checked was on the 18th, and it had updated on that day. So, I mean, that's really, I mean, I know, you know, the public continue to check with us or the city and other, you know, resources that are out there. But if you go to that TIDAM map online and see those dots, that's more helpful. Because it's not so much in real time all the time, but some days they have been updated immediately. And that's, I think, helpful for people who are planning. I've heard people that are going to Beeville and other locations just because they're able to secure. And, I mean, that's how we're, we helped, you know, we helped all our surrounding counties. So definitely go. I know people were concerned about the wait time. And it's, the thing is, our staff has been efficient. It's just we're waiting for the vaccines. If we had an unlimited supply, we'd be cranking them out all, well, I don't know how we could, 600 an hour, you know, pretty amazing feat. But the, that's what we're waiting on. And so just, I hope the public understands that. I think many people do. People tend to get frustrated when they're almost there in line, and then there's a cutoff, right? But there has to be a cutoff, unfortunately. So I hope that as we continue to move forward, that we do get a chance to improve the screening, improve the amount that we're getting in. I know that's a huge amount to undertake when we're talking thousands, when you're looking at other areas that do it within the hundreds. That's more manageable. But the more shots we get, then the more that we'll give out, so.
And I think that's a great point. You kind of touched on two things that I can expand on a little. And I think it's important for people to recognize that our site is regional. It's for the Coastal Bend and beyond. And so when you look at who we vaccinated already, we've vaccinated folks that are outside of even our region. So people are coming to the site. If the vaccinations are not available to them, they are reaching out and coming to our site. And that's a great thing. That's why, that's why we're here. And we've made sure to have one person that's dedicated to all the other counties and agencies to make sure that because the distance is long, that we're able to expedite the process however we can, and having that sole dedicated person to make sure that the other counties are flowing through, and we're going from one to the next to the next, and hopefully rotating back through. And of course, the hope during that time is that all of the other sites start to open. And again, that has to do with the allocations, right? So they're waiting for their allocations, too. But once that all starts to happen, the burden will be taken off of these mega sites. They'll keep running, and they'll be efficient and able to cover large numbers. But for our more vulnerable populations, or those folks that can't tolerate that type of, that type of drive-through, we'll have other vaccination opportunities popping up all over the place. The other thing I wanted to mention was, you know, you talked about the website to look at, and the TIDAM website. I think on February 1st, when the control of allocation goes to the state, that's what I've heard from our TIDAM coordinator, that on February 1st, the say on the split of the allocation will now be in the hands of the state. And I think they're fully informed and have supported us in building these mass sites and helping us make sure that our providers are getting through the approval process. And I think the dissemination, the allocation is going to start to come down in different ways that benefit us as the state of Texas a lot better. So it's just time, a little bit more time before things start to flow better.
Yep. I was commenting just this morning on a call that this feels like the early days of testing, where we had 9,000 people in line, and we had only some product, but not all product. We're in that same boat. I want to stress two things, because I have the stats here in front of me, Melissa.
Sure.
So we use a very special software called Luminaire. This is a software that allows us to do registration onsite. If we had a large amount of vaccine, we could potentially preregister people. And not that that would be a golden ticket necessarily, but it would assist staff in making the process go faster. We could still run it the same way. But for now, we onsite register, and we're very fast. However, the best part of it is that we get some very invaluable data. So even though it's a regional hub, and even though it's doing exactly what it's meant to do, touching over 51 counties in four days alone, the total amount vaccinated was 9380. But 7126 came from Nuasis. So the lion's share is coming from Nuasis. When you further break down that amount, you'll see that the ZIP codes that are represented are, 98% of the Nuasis is within, really, within Corpus Christi, the urban center. No big surprise. So we want everybody to know, it is not the perfect site for everybody, but it is a, it is the way the state of Texas believes that we can most affect the most people the fastest. And again, you have to be eligible to be there. You have to either be 65 years of age or older, or you have to have chronic condition and be over the age of 18, or you have to fit into that 1A category. And so we're still not even at that point where anybody can go and get it. But let me also emphasize that we didn't contemplate not having sites in Corpus Christi. They're all on the books. We have one of the best vaccine management plans that we started on over four months ago. We were recognized for that plan. And moreover, we have encouraged, all of the providers are providers, not just for themselves, it's for the community. So every time you hear about a provider, they're for all of us. Nobody is hoarding vaccine for themselves, although the reason they may have opted to be a provider was so that they could first offer their 1A employees the vaccine. Those employees, for the most part, have been taken care of, and they're already finishing their second dose. So every provider becomes a potential site. A mega site is by definition 1,000 doses a day or more. Mega, the M from the Roman numeral. So we believe that we will have multiple mega sites very quickly inside the city limits. But at once, I want to share with you, we have no vaccine. We're ready. It's, the problem isn't us. The problem is the national supply being very limited. And also, we receive our vaccines straight from the pharmaceutical. So we either get it from Pfizer or from McKesson. In this case, we're waiting on McKesson's delivery of Moderna. That's the vaccine that we are delivering. And as soon as we get that information, we will pass it on to all of you. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that what we all want is as much vaccine as spread out as possible. And all those providers are in place and ready to receive and ready to distribute, from smallest doctor's offices to medium-sized clinics to very large venues. All of it is ready. We just need product. Melissa?
No, that's a great point, Judge. I think it should be reiterated as well, which is just, it's all about the vaccine. So we've done as much planning as we can, we're prepared as we can. Even if it's going to be a different day, the entire team is ready to shift everything from public messaging to operations with moving traffic cones. I mean, we are completely ready to shift again if necessary, which, that's where we can prevent any further delay, is being prepared and ready to go, so that the second it comes, whatever day that ends up being, we can push it the very next day, and we'll be ready for that. We also have, you know, continued operations, not only in testing, but we're supporting other larger sites, if you will, that are, that are doing any kind of vaccination drive-through. My deputy Kathy Ard Blatner on Saturday was out at Memorial assisting Amistad with their closed pod, where they vaccinated 377. And those are folks that we're supporting. And so that's part of our vulnerable population that's being vaccinated. So there's efforts all around us, like the judge said, everybody's queued up and, and ready to go. We're just, we're just kind of standing, waiting for the allocation to drop down. But all efforts are, are triggered and ready. We're following our plan, we're building a volunteer crew to support, you know, alleviating some of our staff that work those incredibly long operational hours.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I just want to congratulate you and your staff. I, I've had experience, I've gone to HEB and I've seen my neighbors and I asked them, they took their shot? They say they did. As a matter of fact, they took it that Friday morning. And they said they were very pleased the way it worked. And I saw it and it was just going very, you know, easy for people just to get in line. They do, people do have to wait, you know, I mean, that's the price you gotta pay. But I just want to congratulate you and your staff. I know our staff from parks is, you know, being out there, working with you all and the city and everybody else. So I want to congratulate you all on that. And there is a Memorial Hospital still doing COVID testing?
So there's testing happening and then on the days where there's not testing, they're also using it to do vaccinations as well. So any of our big functioning sites that we've used for testing, if, if they're not testing, I can see them potentially becoming kind of medium-sized sites as well. So we have the ability to expand and grow. And I want to say thank you for, for pointing out that the team's efforts. It's a, it's a very big deal for everybody to be out there, working those hours. And when people see it and people hear from the community that they went through and, and at the end of the day, they got vaccinated. And I think we've made the process as easy as possible. It's just long. And so we're working every day to improve the, the, the wait time and the conditions, make it better and, and improve. But again, it's, it's, it's a long wait time, so it's not really designed for everybody. But we are putting a lot of people through there and a lot of our communities getting vaccinated.
I know some, some of our employees told me that they were there since 3 o'clock that morning trying to set up. And, you know, we appreciate all of that. And I did hear on the news last night that RTA is going to start doing, helping taking people to the sites or, and then, uh...
So I haven't fully gotten that confirmed, how exactly they're going to transport people. I think it's in an effort to, to kind of take the pressure off of people driving. But we also have to consider that we have the other variant here as well. It's highly contagious. And so far, we haven't really wanted to put people on buses yet because you're putting them in a, in a communal area. So I'll get more information about what, what their plan is or how they're trying to support. But we're also looking at different ways to, to reach out to the community so that transportation isn't required at all. And I think the, the, the primary agency that's going to work that side of things is going to be Corpus Christi Fire Department, again, when we get allocation and, and the allocations come down.
And I also heard Mr. Zanoni this morning saying, it's going to be now a first come, first served basis? There's no more preregistration?
So as of right now, for our, for our coastal bend mega site, we're, we're not doing the preregistration component. It surprisingly makes it a lot more fast and fluid. We get a lot of hangups when we have preregistered folks. It's their right to get there and, and be there. But, but when we have unregistered people in front of them, it complicates it a little bit more. And we really want it to be fast and efficient. We are trying it both ways and, and we just have to have a few more drives to really see what the best way to do that. And, and it might be a split where we have a cap of registration. But when you say first come, first served, it's only in the open phases. So we just kind of want to reiterate that. It's not first come, first served across the board. It's first come, first served for those that fall under the open phases. So phase one and, and tier one and B that are open right now, until that changes.
Yeah, that's what I got from Mr. Zanoni this morning. That's what he said on, on the radio. So anyway, I commend you again and you're all doing a great job. And to all the employees, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Did anybody have any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you very much for all you guys doing over there. Thank the employees for all the work they're doing, doing a good job. Also, but I understand you said, well, the COVID testing is still on every day or what?
Yes, so that we have, the Memorial site is being used by the state to run testing. So that's a continuous operation. If there's days, because they can't run seven days a week, that, that one day or the two days where they're not running, that's when somebody like a provider like Amistad can use Memorial for vaccinations and it's set up to do both.
Do we have a roster or list of when the COVID testing is going to be happening?
We do, and we can make sure we get that sent out to you. I wasn't aware that you weren't receiving our, our schedules, but I can make sure we can get those to the commissioners. I'll send it to Tyner and he can forward it to all of you.
And it's live on our website every, every day, live on our website. And also, you can also find out through oasisknows.com. I believe we also sync up there as well.
Some people don't go to the website.
Yeah.
Usually when they call me, I can just look at the schedule.
Yeah, sure. Let's go ahead and make sure we send it.
Yes, we'll make sure that, that that's sent out, absolutely.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Did anybody else have anything as it, as it pertains to COVID-19 before we move on to Hannah updates? Which I have Scott Cross behind me.
And I want to get to Hannah. I just want to recognize and thank not just the 150 people that make it possible out there, but some of the amazing corporate folks that have helped, including Spectra and the fairgrounds. They've really just gone above and beyond, even though we are certainly a tenant there under our disaster policies that we have with them. They've just been extraordinary. And HEB, like to recognize HEB and particularly HEB in Robstown for really, and Gulf Coast Corporate Region. Thank you Regina for helping us with water and nourishment. It's been fantastic. And I also want to thank the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce. They have reached out and in short order will be setting up an opportunity for other corporate citizens who might want to make a donation towards nourishment for volunteers. We wanted to do that, but it places another burden on us so that we've been able to shift that burden to the Chamber of Commerce. They're best set up for it. They do this during hurricanes and so...
And we have a planning meeting at 4 o'clock today, so we can discuss how that would work and the details of that.
So we're excited about all of these different layers. Finally, I want to thank the city of Corpus Christi. So we talk about perfecting that process. So when you realize we've only done it for four days and you realize that you're going to keep getting better at it, so just know that in the upcoming mega site visits, you'll see better signage, you'll see more comfort, comfort stations slash porta potties. You're going to see better maps online and higher level communications. And so what I mean by that is communications at all levels in, in every way, from the radio all the way to website. And so I just think that, just know that we don't get stuck on, okay, this is the way we're going to do it. This is the way we're always going to do it. We had five hours worth of meetings yesterday to make it better. And just so you know, the weather is a big factor because these are vulnerable populations. And when you're getting them out, if you're waiting in line and you have to go to the bathroom, you don't want to be in the rain. You don't want to register them in the rain and you don't want to have them out in the rain where they could slip and fall.
Or like Monday and Tuesday where it was just above freezing outside. It was very cold.
Wind chills and wind speeds and things like that. So what we do is we, we weigh all of the efforts and we say, this is the best day. But does it, you know, once we have unlimited supply, we can talk all day long about consistency. Right now, it's about, thank you Lord for bringing us these vaccines, these free vaccines, and how can we get them into as many arms as possible for those that are eligible? And if we, every one we do protects our community that one bit more. So I just want you to know that we've shored up some of our, I think, processes that really needed it. And I bet next week, we identify five more things we want to make better. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to have Scott Cross stand up and, and give you the, the real-time details on Hannah recovery. But until I can get them to turn this hair dryer off when you're speaking, commissioners, if you don't mind removing your mask, it's very difficult to hear you from up here. Thank you.
Is that the AC now?
Yeah, I don't know. Apparently all that talking I did couldn't be heard when I was very much...
That's what I, remember I told you I was having trouble too?
Yeah, sorry.
Morning.
Good morning, Scott.
So last week, I worked real diligently with Hagerty and, and also in conjunction with Cloud's office to see about possibly getting a, a last-minute declaration. I don't have an update of what may or may not have been signed on, on the way out the door today. I just don't know. We also have been working with purchasing. We're still in the RFQ lane as far as I know. We're not going back to the RFP lane. Working with purchasing right now on the RFP for the marine debris removal. Judge, those people that we were involved with early on, Crowder, Jam Davidson, all those are aware that that's coming out as far as the marine debris. The, working with Mr. Pettis on the public input piece. And so we're, we're going to be doing something. I'm waiting on his proposal based on the scope of work that we developed, that he should be getting to me probably today or tomorrow. One of the things I, for the rest of the court, one of the things I talked to the judge about where it's, where this project is concerned, I don't think, once we figure out what our funding source is moving forward, whether it's the federal government helping us, whether it's us, whether it's grants, what have you, I don't think we need to wait on the parking lot. The parking lot is a parking lot is a parking lot. What are they going to tell you on the public participation part? Build a parking lot? You know, I mean, so the parking lot, and as far as short, making short order of this, we know what kind of parking lot we had. We know we want to rebuild the parking lot. We know that the parking lot has a extreme amount of ADA accessibility on that beach. And it's, it makes this Padre Bay Beachhead property the most accessible ADA beachfront property on the entire Texas coast. That's no exaggeration. And so if we can, while we figure out all the bells and the whistles concerning the pier and the concession area of the pier, if we could, once we figure out a path forward as far as how we're going to pay for everything, if we could execute the parking lot up front while we're dealing with the pier, that would get us way down the road. And it would, it would show progress, it would establish that public access element back again. We could get those beach cabanas, the little picnic tables that are out there and, you know, really start this moving forward. It was 120,000 square foot parking lot before it was done out of limestone base that wasn't cement stabilized, it should have been years ago when it was put in, that makes it more resilient. But I've recommended to the judge and I'd recommend to the court when we go back, we advocate by doing it all out of concrete. That'll make it much more resilient and, and mitigate storm surge or even just inundation. Because whether you buy into it or not, sea level rise is happening. And more and more, we're seeing more inundation frequencies with tides running up higher and higher and higher. And so, you know, having a resilient parking lot that provides all those other things is really important. So that's, other than where we're at with declaration, Judge, I, I think that pretty much covers everything and, and accomplished all the tasks that you set before me last week.
Yes, you did an amazing job. I think I said, don't stop running and you said, I need water. We said LOL, so thank you. Here, here it is.
Yeah.
Thank you for keeping the swift pace. All of that is an excellent report. I personally concur with you on, on let's move forward with the parking lot and the concrete. And I will let Commissioner Chesney work with you to bring an agenda item as soon as we can. I think the one thing I wanted to comment on is that it does not look like we got the declaration out the door, unless we're going to get it in the next 30 minutes. Having said that, we do have a, a call into the congressman's office. So we, that doesn't mean our efforts stop, commissioners. We will ask this next administration for the same ask, right? That a president under, under the federal statute can also declare. And so we will ask this new administration, it's just we're going to need new letters, same information, new cover page. And so we're going to work on that with Scott and Hagerty. And with regards to the CIP, it would be wonderful if you could work with Juan, who probably knows quite a bit about dollars and cents on concrete parking lots, just to get us the guesstimate so that the CIP can be updated in very, very short order, because it's about to be finished. So that when we do get that need for dollars, which is also coming up, you know, we'll understand what money we're needing for that parking lot. And there's some potential dollars in, potentially maybe Commissioner Chesney, in other arenas. I'll just leave it at that, for parking lot only?
Yeah, I mean, it's just going to be something we're going to have to really figure out.
But it's good to go ahead and, for example, I mean, you know, you got to get it designed. If you really want to move the process forward, I think that's what you're saying is, we all know we have to get ADA accessibility. We all know that that footprint is the footprint. So let's move on at least getting it designed and cost, well, the cost estimate, the CIP update, the, the design, you know, kind of, let's go through the phases.
At least the cost estimate, I don't want, you know, I... Well, we've got it, we've got a cost estimate. I used LAN when we were in the disaster right afterwards.
Right, right.
To get cost estimates on how to rebuild the original footprint. And that would have been asphalt, limestone base, steel grid.
For the DSO.
Yeah. And so we went back and got that. Now, it's real easy and I've already reached out to LAN again, just to give me rough order magnitude numbers on doing 120,000 square foot parking lot out of concrete. And so, you know, that, that'll be easy to do. The, probably the heaviest lifting on all of this, whether it's the pier, whether it's the parking lot, is going to be permitting. Permitting, permitting, permitting. It doesn't matter if there was a footprint there. It's still going to require permitting through the GLO. It's still going to require permitting through the core. It's still going to require all the regulatory agencies. Section 7 consultation, which is under U.S. Fish and Wildlife, under the Threatened and Adjudged Species Act, is going to be the heaviest lift on your permitting. That's for the pier.
But Scott, that's on the parking lot, right?
No, the pier and parking lot.
Okay.
Because even though there's never been a recorded sea turtle ever nest on that section of beach, it's still designated as critical habitat to all three listed species, including red knots and popping plovers. Even though they're not there, you still have to jump through those hoops.
Well, I think that's going to be as we're moving...
A lot about piping plovers.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be where, as we're moving forward, you know, it's a good segue into where we're going on this, this committee that we're forming. And you know, that's what the judge and I've talked about is, it, it is so crucial and the importance of this committee that we're, we're fixing to form to put under the coastal parks. It's so crucial because it's going to be so much work and so much information and so much effort. That's why we really felt like pulling that out as a separate, single focus, bust-your-tail entity is going to be important. And, and obviously your role on that is going, you know, as the historian and as the man with all the knowledge is going to be key. And, and it's not that we're trying to give you something else to do, but this is on your agenda anyway. It's just on your agenda in a few minutes, it'll be on your agenda in a different way. And I, I'm, I'm really excited to hear what this committee comes up with, based on this public input and all the stuff we're talking about. Because, you know, that needs to come into play and, and that needs to be, you know, explained fully, you know, how that's going to work because that's going to make a difference in, in the cost of the parking lot and, you know, all those things. So anyway, we're, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself, but we're on Bob Hall, so I think I'm okay.
But any questions from the rest of the court? It's pretty cut and dry.
All questions?
You said there was an estimated cost on the parking lot. What is it?
Go ahead and give him estimated cost of the parking lot.
Parking lot, what is it?
If we built it back exactly like it was, it's about $846,000, exactly like it was.
And then concrete?
You would just double that. So you're just under 2 mil.
Yeah. And of course, irony is, is of course our super storms are getting bigger and bolder. And so you're just throwing good money, in my opinion, away when you put asphalt down. It's going to come right back up on, on the next storm.
What happens is, is when the, when the water runs up on it, I mean, those, like the end of your access roads, and then this is all related. So the end of your access roads, years ago, went back and I, I fixed all the end of the access roads where they culminate out on the beach. That's where it meets the sand. And I cement stabilized the base under, on, on the ends of them, a, a good amount of feet. And so what happened is, you know, since 2009, since I've been here, we've had high tide storms of one, of one another. And those access roads, the ends of them, they get inundated, but they're holding up. They're not breaking down. And so, you know, you've got two mitigation options. You cement stabilize or you make it bulletproof with concrete. Because when that water, you can't build a, a, a parking lot or a road out on island like you would inland, like a county road. You just can't do it. It won't hold up. When that water hits that asphalt, if it's not stabilized or if it's not concrete, that asphalt just pills up just like an onion. You know, the skin of an onion. And so, and this, you're just going, you're going to laugh at this, but it's very true. If you don't cement stabilize your roads in your parks or your parking lot and stuff like that, the gophers will inundate everything you got. I've literally watched gophers go from this side of the road, tunnel underneath the road and come out on the other side. And it creates a void and you get all these dips in it. That's, if you go to pack... That's, if you go to Packer Channel Nature Park, that's probably got out there, but, so, anyhow, I've said enough.
Very good, very good. Any other questions?
Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
You're saying do the parking lot first before you start fixing the pier?
Yeah, 'cause you can do the parking lot very quickly. It's, there's not, it's basic civil engineering, and while you're working on, the pier's much more complex, much more permitting involved, much more dynamic, much more public input on that, and agency input. Parking lot is just flat parking lot with ADA parking and access.
I understand, but when they're fixing the pier, will they be using heavy machinery that might affect the parking lot?
It won't if you do it out of concrete.
Okay, well, that's what I wanna know.
Yeah, if it's, you know, you know how just turning, vehicles turning on asphalt? Especially like trash trucks when they're lifting up, you know, they can really break down asphalt, especially in the summer. So, good point.
I was wondering about that.
That's a good question. And it's, and it's gonna be important. It is going to cost a lot of money to redo everything correctly, and it is going to be worth it. So we need to just jump over the hurdle that, you know, there's no free lunch at this moment. We're, we're looking for anything that we can, but-
How long do we wait?
You've got to accept that if you want something, and it's got, and in this case, it's got an amazing benefit to it, which is that it's income producing, you need to find your way to get your dollars borrowed and get to work, because you're losing more than you're gaining by waiting. And that's not just construction costs, that's revenue.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, my bad. I really wanted to stress again, and I, and I know, I know I say this repeatedly, but sometimes I really feel like I need to repeat myself, not because I'm senile and getting old, but because really and truly sometimes it takes three or four, six times for the public to hear what you're saying. And I kind of believe in that concept, and I want to, again, reiterate that, that we are really working in a very fast pace on this Bob Hall pier, at a pace that is fast but safe. Because safe meaning, we don't want to do it wrong, and we don't want to be so fast that we mess it up. But we are, this is a huge priority to this court. Again, and I've said this before too, the judge and I have had countless conversations on, on all of this stuff, most of which, most, all of which we agree on, and we're really working hard to move this thing forward. So I think it's important that, that the public continue to hear that, hey, it is, we are moving, it is, believe me, because I get calls and emails, and I assure you, I assure this community that it is high on my priority list, I believe it's high on this court's list, it's certainly maybe a little higher on mine because it's in my precinct, but, but this court has been super in regards to its support of this, and we are, we're gonna, that we're gonna get this right. I am, I hate that we have to spend this money, I hate that we have to do this, but I will tell you, I am so excited about the legacy that this court gets to leave and the impact that this court gets to leave once this project is done. And so the, the last thing I want to do, and I know the court wants to do, is do anything that's not right, but I think this is gonna be a beautiful addition that's gonna be solid and really hard to take down again for this community for way past my lifetime. That's, that's my hope, so, thank you, Scott, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and one other thing, commissioners in precinct one, two, and three, I don't know what buildings you have that would require a air handling unit that services a kitchen. We were up there yesterday. We had just put in a new air handling unit in that pier for the kitchen itself. This is a big air handling unit, which also works with the Vena Hood for makeup air. If we leave that thing in there, especially in the part that's gonna get remodeled, it's gonna, it's gonna rust and fall apart before we ever get to it. So we're making plans right now to pull it and pull some of the condensing units, you know, that run your air conditioner that are up there, while they're still in good shape and functional. So if you have a need at one of your facilities, if I get it out, you can pay the vendor to bring it to you and install it. If you, if it'll work for you, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, because I just can't let it sit. It's just gonna, you know how that kind of equipment is, if it just sets, it just falls apart. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Check with Edward. Senior senators. The senior senators might be able to use something like that.
Okay, and so, and so we're going to move to our board appointments. And first, we have the South Texas Water Authority. And actually, I was handed, Commissioner, I have one that came this morning. Tyner, will you take us through it? Do you have this as well? You remember how we have vacancies, one for Driscoll and one for Bishop? The one we received, commissioners, is for Driscoll. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I-
Commissioner?
I make a motion, we submit Sersa Vala for the Driscoll slot.
Okay, and-
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post-same sign. This is really gonna help make those quorums from now on. Do we have any others, Tyner, to consider?
You also have Nueces County Board of Coastal Parks, commissioners?
No, I'm sorry, I meant for the South Texas Water Authority.
No, you had the applicant Rolando Gonzalez before?
Yes.
And I believe that was for the Driscoll spot as well.
Oh, that was for the Driscoll spot as well? Okay, okay, all right, well then we are, we're done there. And we'll move on to Coastal Parks Commission, and while we've been waiting, I had the opportunity to, to look over, I've got a list here in front of you, but it's not been provided to you, so I'm going to read off first, the, because you may not remember, or it's been a while anyway since we've done this, but the statute that governs here is, give me just one second, section 321.021 for the county attorney in the local government code, Jenny, and it is section A that applies here. The board must be composed of seven commissioners appointed by the county judge with approval of the commissioners' course. So I make these appointments, and then they are voted on by, by you all. And so also, other statutes, just for the record, refer to commissioners appointing. This one is unique, and in this case, the judge appoints. So the Coastal Parks Board that I present to you today, and I have information about all of the candidates depending on whether or not you all need it, or you've had the opportunity to, you know, to not see their applications that were part of our board, I mean, board, part of our website. Mr. Cody Bates, Mrs. Mitra Khan, Mr. Troy Adler, Mr. Bob Paulson, Mr. Ms. Kim, Mrs. Kim Winton, Ms. Misty Svoboda, and Mrs. Elizabeth Erickson. Those are the seven appointments that I have here for you this morning, and I'd like a motion.
I only have five, Jen.
I'm sorry, let me start again. And I was trying to say Ms. correctly and Mrs., and I think I messed a few of them up, so it gives me a chance to correct it. Thank you. Mr. Cody Bates, Mrs. Mitra Khan, Mr. Troy Adler, Mr. Bob Paulson, Mrs. Kim Winton, Ms. Misty Svoboda, and Ms., Mrs. Elizabeth Erickson. Those are the seven that I bring, and I would look for, I'd like to make the motion, and I'd look for a second at this time.
Second.
Judge, discussion?
Yes, we can have discussion.
Judge, let me start by saying, I appreciate the time that you've taken on this with me. When we started this process, we, we had, and I say this in the most positive way, we had several points of discussion and disagreement, and we worked about 95% of this out, and I am, I think that's fantastic, and wanna, wanna say that upfront. I appreciate, like I said, I know you spent hours on it, I've spent hours on it, because this is so very important to both of us, and I appreciate that. My, my only motion to amend that I'm going to make and would appreciate consideration for by the court is to add or to let Jim Needham, who is the Coastal Parks Board Chair, has served for this service community for many, many years. We, we all have talked about term limits, but at this point, there is no law on the books on term limits. That will eventually take into account, or take into effect what'll happen to this board, but at this point, we don't have it. I think Jim has been an outstanding Coastal Parks Chair. This last couple of years has been tough, you know, the Parks Board has, has changed how they've had to deal and do things, because we have a county judge who's extremely involved in a very positive way and very active, and so it's, it's, it's been a little different. And so my only motion or attempt to amend would be to, to leave Jim Needham on and to put Elizabeth Erickson on the Bob Hall Pier Committee. And that's, that's because, and the only reason I'm doing that, I don't know Ms. Erickson, the only reason I'm doing that is because everything else that we have done on this, the judge and I have agreed on. This is just the one where I really feel strongly, and it is to appoint, but it's up to the court to approve, and I feel very strongly that the Coastal Parks Board Chair is an important person to keep on there. We are, we are moving, assuming that the court approves, when we get to the Bob Hall, we're moving three Coastal Parks Directors potentially over to the Bob Hall Pier, because we feel like we really, really need their experience there, and I think the judge and I are in lockstep agreement on that. And I think on the makeup of that committee, save for this one thing. So again, you know, whatever the court's wishes are, I would just appreciate the, the ability to make that motion to amend that slate and to put Jim Needham, to leave Jim Needham on and to move Elizabeth Erickson to the Bob Hall Committee.
And I appreciate the discussion and concur with your analysis that we've worked very well together on both the Bob Hall Pier Committee and the Coastal Parks Board, and not just in names and, and really in substance, and trying to figure out the vision and the moving forward. And because we brought it up, I do want to not only thank all the members of the board that have served Nueces County. It means a lot to the Commissioners Court to have people volunteer their time and to believe in public service. And my rationale has little to do with the idea that we aren't grateful as much as it has to do with the fact that, that Jim has served for 18 years and that this court believes in rotating folks. And I think it's really important, since we have a legislative agenda that we voted on 5-0, that supports term limits at 12 years. It would be disingenuous for me to say to the legislature, please help me pass term limits, but I'm not willing to do it myself for my own, when it, when I have the ability to do it. So I think that it's really important that, that we recognize service and thank people for their service, and it would please me very much, and I've asked this of him, is to please-
We don't have term limits on all the boards. We don't have term limits on the Hostel District.
No, we have a legislative agenda that is promoting term limits across the board for all boards. We've passed that.
Yeah, but, yeah, but we don't know if we're gonna pass the legislation or not, because-
That's right, but if you vote on it, the concept was that it would be-
Well, I second, I second the motion, Commissioner.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor, Commissioner.
[inaudible]
No, sir, let me, let me take one motion before I take the second. There was a motion and a second to approve our slate.
You know, and the only thing here, Judge, the only thing here is, if it's a Commissioner's precinct, I think he should have a lot of say-so, a lot of respect, just saying, all right, this is what you want, this time we'll do it. I just, you know, I just think that trying to change everything and not really have a voice in your precinct is bad, you know, and that shouldn't happen.
So Commissioner, you must have misunderstood Commissioner Chesney. He and I meet not only regularly, but we've met on this particular occasion multiple times, and we've created a tremendous amount of goodwill as we've worked together on all the projects, so I think that you've mischaracterized it.
I understand the whole thing, but he's got a different request, you know, he's got a special request.
He does, and the statute requires that the county judge appoints, and so therefore, it's simply a motion. Let's see how we can make this work with a motion. There was a motion and a second, and-
And Judge- And all- I wasn't aware there was gonna be, Commissioner Chesney was gonna talk about it.
Okay.
I'd like to remove my motion.
You, I'm sorry, sir?
Can I remove my second, my motion that I made?
Yes, you, you can remove it. So what I can do at this time is withdraw his motion as a second, and what I'll do is withdraw the slate completely at this time. And because the county judge has to make the whole slate, so I'll just withdraw the slate and ask for a table, and we'll go back to the drawing board. So I'll withdraw the whole slate, because the county judge does need to be able to make the, the appointment. And, and so we will, we will work again together.
You know, Judge, we agree with everything, everything you said, except for the Chair.
Thank you, Judge.
That's correct, but the law requires it to be a certain way, so I have to resubmit. So we'll have to do, the county judge needs to, remember, the statute was created so that you would approve the slate, and so the slate is, anyway, the point is, we'll have to bring it back, we, I think we've got a special meeting coming back anyway. So we'll do that, probably next week. So I'll just motion to table, and will you second that for me?
I second it.
All right, and then all those in favor to table this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Judge, do you want to go ahead and do the ones that, on Bob Hall that we do agree? And that'll leave open slots, but I-
Yeah, we're gonna have some open slots anyway.
Right, so you want to go ahead and do that?
Okay, so what I'm going to do is name some Bob Hall Committee members, and excited about this, but please know that we're still working together with regards to the, a few slots that are open, and I think it really has to do with making sure we have people that represent different backgrounds and industries, so that we can really get a collective mindset here. You know, we're kind of missing the marketing piece here. You know, maybe somebody who has advertising, marketing. But I will read off who we have right now.
And I think that'll, I think that'll be remedied with-
I agree.
With the other thing that we're working on too, with bringing in the public-
The Pettis.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's go forward here, and we've got Ms. Janie Bell, Mr. John White, and Tyner, I'm gonna provide this list to you as well, but I want the record to reflect. Mr. Tyler Thornson, Mr. Jerry Plemons, Mr. Stan Hulse, Ms. Kewana Dunson, Mr. Ryan Turner, Ms. Karen Pettis, a total of nine, but we hope to expand that to maybe 11.
Judge Leo Trevino?
Did I say not, I missed it? I said, oh, forgive me, I just missed it. It's on my list, Leo Trevino.
Is that nine?
It's nine. I'd like to just point out, if it's okay, Commissioner, but you feel free to add, because we're saying the names, but may I give you a little more information for our public? Because we have, I thought we put a, is it okay to say hell? I think we put a hell of a list together. It's just a great list. And, and so Janie Bell, of course, you'll recognize her as having been a Coastal Parks Board member, and because we'll be liaising with Coastal Parks and this Commissioners Court, she's an excellent choice. Mr. John White also fits that bill, as well as doctor, excuse me, I made him a doctor, Tyler Thornson. Also Jerry Plemons is a great veteran and has a clinical research facility and is incredibly active on the island and with coastal issues. Stan Hulse has been interested in island issues his whole life, is the former head of Economic Development, I think, for South Padre Island, and has been the head of Padre Island Business Association. He's gonna bring a tremendous amount of economic development knowledge. Leo Trevino is gonna really add to the group with his background in coastal bed bays and estuaries, estuaries and coastal environmental science. Kewana Dunson is gonna lead up the safety, I think, component to this pier and all its amenities. Ryan Turner represents Port Aransas and is a member of the surfing community, and we all know that these piers draw a tremendous amount of surfers from all over the world. And Ms. Karen Pettis, who will be representing the business community, and really, as we talk about concessionaires and an opportunity to develop that concessionaire's piece, we want to make certain that Karen is bringing that business mindset. And we look forward to filling our vacancies, but I think this group is really excited about working with court, with Scott Cross and Coastal Parks. And I'll be excited next week to bring back, I hope, the same slate with a little bit more of background and knowledge, or perhaps a little bit of a different slate to make certain. But I'll work with Commissioner Chesney on this and the other commissioners as well. And we are gonna move forward now with our next one, which is NCDC.
Judge, is it okay? I just made a comment, and I think we-
Yes.
Should we go ahead and just make a motion? And I think we, should we go ahead and just make a motion on that one too, to put that on the record? For that group of people that we just nominated? Or is that okay?
Tell me again.
It's okay if I make a motion?
If y'all, I don't know if you wanted to vote.
Yeah, an ad hoc committee just needs to be announced by the law.
I just thought it'd be nice to have maybe the whole court-
No, I think we need to follow the law. It seems that people are really against that these days. Let's just follow the statutes and follow the law. I'm good with it. I think it's really awesome that we have the ability to have so many people serve. So anyway, we'll contact them with the letter. You and I are going to have a great meeting with them, and we'll make those announcements very forthcoming. But-
And I just want to be sure, I thought if we were creating a new committee, that would require by law a motion, but-
No, the county judge appoints ad hoc committees.
I've never, I didn't know that, sorry, I didn't know that was, okay.
Well, Tyner?
And then Judge, if I may ask the court to go back to J1, I was corrected by Tara that Rolando Gonzalez actually is a bishop.
That's what I thought.
Sorry about that.
But I didn't want to overstep. Okay, we'll go back in just a moment.
Okay.
Okay? But no, I don't think we need to vote. If we do, we'll catch it in the special. But most ad hoc committees, blue ribbon committees, are just committees that are set aside, you know, to, I mean, again, and we don't have the committee full. So if you want to ratify it, let's wait till we get the 11.
And just maybe, Jenny, if you could get some clarification on, I've never, I don't know that ad hoc committee rule. And I'm not trying to say she's wrong, I just don't know. So if we could clarify that too, because I want to make sure, I just thought, like, anyway. So just get some clarification on whether that needs to be a voted thing or not, that'd be great.
It doesn't hurt at all to ratify, but let's get the whole 11 placed, you know?
Sure.
Plus, you would want the nine to accept as well.
I think they all, well, I know they all have. So, I mean, just, you've talked some, I've talked some, I think they're good, so.
Yeah, always like to send them the letter and have them accept.
Right, right, right.
Okay, let's move back to South Texas Water Authority. Commissioner Modas, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Modas. Commissioner Gonzalez, you have a bishop resident and a South Texas Water Authority candidate recommended by Judge Madrid. Do I have a motion to accept?
No.
No, sir?
I tabled the last time, well, I tabled it to get more applicants.
Which one?
I tabled the last time, Judge, the last time we, the meeting.
Okay.
Which one are we talking, I'm sorry?
I'm not ready for that.
For the bishop slot?
Yeah, Rolando Gonzalez.
Okay, so you want to table this again because we, you know, we've had about six months of no applications.
And by the way-
So we're going to have to make it, we need quorum.
This posting actually states that it's posted until filled. So we'll just wait until we get another applicant.
Motion to table?
Okay, we've got a motion to table.
I don't think it's a table because that's what it says, it stays open. I think we last week, that's what we did last meeting.
Yeah, if you just don't appoint, it stays open.
Right, well, I think we have a motion to table. And I think I heard-
Do we need a motion to table or not?
Well, of course, because it's up, South Texas Water Authority. We have applicants in an open space. Okay, a motion table to the February 10th?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I vote nay. We need to fill these positions. And this person, this Water Authority Board is actually incredibly important. And we have a letter of recommendation on file from another county judge who believes him to be an excellent candidate. So I just want us to say that we really need to address this issue. It's incumbent upon us to fill our boards and positions. And it's been vacant, Tyner, can you give us next time how long this position's been vacant? Quorum is not being met, and they're not able to conduct business. And quite frankly, it's on Noises County to fill this position. And when you have a vacancy, you either need to do an up or down vote. You can't be-
They don't have a quorum and one vacancy?
No, they had two vacancies, and they needed that, they have asked for us, for Noises, to please do our duty to fill this. So let's have another round- Well, we can't understand what you're saying.
I'll talk to Karola myself, I don't believe that, I believe that they had enough, they didn't have a shortage of members.
Well, I think that whether, it's obviously important to do our duty. And our duty is to fill the spot. So we'll bring it back to court and, next time. Okay. It's very difficult to understand you.
Hopefully we get some more applicants. Well, you want me to wear a mask, you don't want me to wear a mask. You want me to wear a mask?
No, I'm just asking you to clear, to speak into the microphone so we can all understand what you're saying. Okay. Very interesting. All right, we've got consent agenda now, and we've got A through, A through. Gosh, so many, did I miss one, John?
Court appointment?
I thank you, John, I appreciate that so much. That's, I even have a sticky here to remind me. I've got an announcement for the county judge's appointment to the NCDC. Again, this is an announcement only, and I've got to find my sticker. The reappointments and letters have gone out, but we haven't made the formal announcement that Mrs. Sandra Alvarez has been reappointed, Ms. Christine Bryant, representing the CCRDC, Dr. Matilda Sines, and the, we had a slot that was vacated. And I believe it was vacated by San Juan Garcia. And it's being filled by a professor from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and his name is Dr. John Dawson. And what's good about Dr. Dawson is he was serving as an ex officio on the board. So he's very well versed on the board. So those are the folks that will continue to serve. And I think they're going to be able to make a presentation at the next, at least that was my understanding. They wanted to come and do a quarterly report for us here at the beginning of 2021. So I look, we look forward to seeing these new appointments. And that's, of course, for the Noises County Development Commission, but the official name is the Industrial Commission. Okay, so we have the consent agenda, and again, it's long. And it goes all the way through double G, double G. And I know you're here, we've got a lot of tax resale offers here at the end. So Commissioners, you've had a chance to review. Can I have a motion? Is there anyone that you need to have more information on or would like to exclude from a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Hold on, I think I had one. Hold on, Judge, I'm sorry.
Special motions, Judge, 28 and 29. Special motions, 28, 29.
Judge, I just wanted to pull X, just to talk about for a second.
X. Special motions, 28 and 29, okay?
Also, C.
Letter C.
E.
Letter E.
K.
K.
And W.
As in kite and W. All right?
I'll take item double E.
Double E.
Wait, gosh, sorry.
Okay, all righty.
I motion to approve the rest of the items.
Thank you.
Second.
I've got a second, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I've got multiple seconds. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the same sign. Okay. So now I have A. Let's just take them in order.
Actually, B, C, Judge, special motions?
Yeah, C.
I'm sorry, I thought you was, somebody said A. Okay, so that's my fault, sorry. So A for the clerk is in, I guess you knew that already. Okay, take C.
Yeah, number 28 on special motions should be Accenture LLP, the 22,000. This is still going on, how much more do we have a balance on this thing, Judge?
So we end on January 30th, and-
This month?
Yes, that's correct.
30, okay. So is this the last payment or second, we've got one more payment or?
I'll check the invoices, but the judge saying that we may be a little bit behind on some payments, but this is probably pretty close, so if it's not the last, it is very close.
And let me remind you and the court and the public that when we have bills, sometimes there is a lag time, we pay them. But we are also in the process of our reimbursements. And all of their work is reimbursable work and is going through the portals of TIDAM. And actually, we're in like number, step number six out of seven for a huge chunk of it. But all of it is part of our COVID-19 response, just like all of the bills and all of the P car transitions and all of the, everybody that does work and/or any goods or services that are procured under COVID-19 response are there.
Question, is this, is this already been included in the reimbursement? I mean, is this submitted already, or is it?
Yes, we have what we called a spending plan that was submitted. And so we anticipated everything. It's just that you're seeing things, you see a lag time between someone-
You're always behind two weeks.
That's right, it could be longer, it could be a month.
But the other thing is, I'm saying, if anything that is not behind us or that's already been approved, anything that's approved as of now, practically January the 1st, is not for reimbursement, right?
Yes, sir, actually, it is. So we have, we have two things. We have a new spending relief bill that was signed by Congress to extend the CRF for another year. We also have a, another funding pot of money called CESF that we have until January 30th. And we also have a proposal that will be brought before Congress that was announced, I think, two weeks ago, that will, there will be another relief bill for local and state governments. And on top of all of that, we have FEMA, of which they are eligible, and we are working with our disaster management. I will say to you that I have become an expert, along with Maria Bedia and our true experts, Hagerty, on every reimbursement that we have submitted. And we keep a detailed tracker. So I welcome any question, any type of, you know, issue that you are concerned that you might have because we have detailed information.
I'm just concerned about the reimbursement, Judge, that's all. If it stops, we need to know when it stops.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, I just need to know, hey, as of this day, we don't get reimbursed no more, you know?
Yeah.
But, you know, just want to make sure that-
So if you're worried about it, let us brief you on it because we can, we have more information and details to provide to you than what you're seeing here on paper. But I can assure you that nobody's more worried about it than I am and that Maria's worried because we are absolutely, have been living it for the past nine months, and we know the process.
I'm worried too, I'm worried with you, I'm worried with you.
Judge, do you have any belief at this point that some of these things won't get reimbursed? And based on your-
I think we're going to get reimbursed. I think it's very interesting that we've got the dynamics that we do. I might have been worried before, maybe a couple of weeks ago. But with the new spending bill and local governments in the pattern, I'm actually grateful to say that I think we're going to have dollars for our vaccine money. I've kind of been worried that, you know, this new spending that we have with vaccine distribution. But we now know that the states are going to be, you know, giving us dollars for that too. And just so you know, we're about flush, where we really aren't flush is with our labor costs. And so there might be some overtime, so we might lose out 25% of our potential overtime costs for labor. But no, I'm not worried about other things because they meet the qualifications, they meet the eligibility. And because quite frankly, we just did excellent work with Hagerty to make sure that everybody that worked on our response or items that we bought were reimbursable.
And I know we've done this before, and, but, and maybe Dale, you can, or one of y'all. So of all the money that we've used for CARES Act things and pandemic, how much, Dale, would you say has that been? And how much so far is being reimbursed? Because I think that's important for the community to know too, that we are getting reimbursed for a lot of these monies so that they don't think, we're not, because I know we're working on it, and I just want to continue to reinforce that.
Yes, as the judge is saying, Maria has a great list from TIDAM on how much we've submitted for reimbursements and how much they're processing and submitted for reimbursement. I know that the claims for reimbursements is well over 6 million. And they're processing through stuff that they've already processed through. It's not very much, it's 200,000, but I know they're working on a lot of it. So a lot of it can be processed through to get payments. So we're still in the process for it, and a lot of it is documentation and detail behind the information. We're constantly getting information requests from TIDAM on stuff we're putting in. So as the judge is saying, it's taking a while, but we expected it to take a while. But we're working on, continuing with Maria on how, we're working with her to get the information she needs to provide to them. And I believe she can be the one to provide you the best list of where we are on reimbursement requests.
Okay, maybe we could, maybe we could get it updated on that?
Just so you know, Maria could give you, so, because it's important for you to understand the, sort of, how it all works. So Hagerty, they are the specialist with disaster management recovery. And Accenture also has a department inside that only works on finance, on funding. And we work in tandem together with grants and emergency management. And to say that we put in a tremendous amount of time every week on it is an understatement. We have unbelievable detail. But what I guess is important is that TIDAM just got started. Remember, the last day to submit was December 15th. That was internally for TIDAM. So we're literally working off two weeks. So we have about $6 million.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a lag time. What I think I'm more interested in would be, using your number, 6 million has been spent. Whatever million has been reimbursed. Whatever amount has been pending, and what do we think we're not going to get?
Right, well, what you really need to know is that everything we've submitted, we believe is reimbursable.
Right.
And that means our burn rate would be 100% returned to us, plus, plus, we are claiming over a million and, a million six in labor, not all of which is unbudgeted.
No, no, I understand.
So it's not a windfall, but it's basically a windfall if you consider that those, labor was already budgeted. It's that piece of overtime that's not, so, let me just say this, I feel-
Potentially, because it could be, you may lose on the overtime, but you may get some of the reimbursement on the labor.
But the difference between FEMA and TIDAM is this. We have an allocation of $5.2 million. That's different than asking FEMA to go reimburse you 5.2 million. All we're having to do is prove our backup documentation.
I understand.
So this county will be made whole. And I'm going to tell you something, we have worked an unbelievable feat to get from nothing to something.
Well, and I know the city's already written us a check for several million dollars. And that's all I'm looking for, is just an update on kind of where-
Well, it really should come in our COVID-19, but it gets kind of long. But what we'll do is, how about we do it next week or next, whenever we come? Let us do just a funding update.
That'd be awesome.
And Maria, we have all, we have so much detail, would make your head spin, but that we've got a good, and I know that we're all worried about it, but what I'm saying to you is that we have the detail on it, and-
And if we could just get the detail in the packet before the meeting so I can have a chance to read it before we come in here, that'd be awesome.
Maria, could you please help with all of that? Yeah. Right, okay, that's great. Kevin, welcome. Can I pause for just a moment, everybody, and welcome Kevin Kishnik? And I'm guessing Helen is with you.
Yes, this is Helen. I wanted to read this letter. I don't know if you guys, did you have it on record or anything?
I did have it on record, I loved it, Helen.
Has the, have the Commissioners read this letter?
Yes.
Okay.
But say anything you want to, we don't care, say it again.
We like recognizing.
We like it, do it again.
I'm going to read it just so people can hear it because these are the sort of things that really make us proud, as staff members, as elected officials, and from a customer's service standpoint. Because these are the things that we strive for each and every day. A lot of times, we don't always get to give people the answers that they want. We don't always get to give them the things that they wish because we have to follow the rules and regulations set forth by the state and so forth. But little did Helen know, but she had a customer who was going through some major trials. So I'm just going to read the letter so you have it. And it says, hi Kevin, hope you and your staff are doing well during this- your staff are doing well during this pandemic. Our office has been, has, our office went on spring break and we have never come back. As, as if this year has not been stressful enough, my father passed away unexpectedly in August. As I settle his estate, I have noticed one thing, customer service is one thing important because you never know what the other person is going through. This morning, I visited the motor vehicle department at the courthouse to transfer a title of my father's vehicle to my name. Helen helped me, and this was so pleasant and understanding. I have limited experience in handling these types of transactions as my father always tended to them for me. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate Helen's friendly attitude and efficiency in handling the title transfer. She helped ease my anxiety and even provided some advice when I realized I did not have the, the hardware for the front of my license plate. Sometimes, all we need is a little friendliness. Thank you for you and all your department, which do every day for their citizens. You are much appreciated. Best, Cynthia." And it came from Cynthia Arbuckle. And I think that letter really speaks for itself for Helen and then the things that we strive for in that department. And I appreciate the court recognizing her, her work and just, she, she did it because she's, not because she has to, but because she wants to and because this is the person that she is.
Helen, so glad you came upstairs for us to be able to do this for you.
Thank you so much.
You know, I, I love being on the first floor because I always say that's where the action is. You know, that's where actually you feel people. Up here, it's very quiet. And downstairs is where you really feel like you're inside the, the people's courthouse. But it's the people serving the people that make the difference. And as we read that letter, I just am reminded how many people approach motor vehicles in a year. And we rely on the kindness and the character of the people that work for us to reflect who we are. And so it is so fitting that you're employee of the month and we get to tell you're going to get a great parking space.
Okay.
And if you, right now, during COVID-19, you know, we can go out to restaurants and we haven't really done this too much, but I'd love to treat you to lunch. That's kind of one of the nice things and get to know you more. And you could share with me good ideas that I can then share with Kevin about motor vehicles. And we'll even invite Kevin if he wants to come. And we just want to say thank you for representing us so well. Glad you could come up here. Keep up the great work. And I know that good work is infectious. So I bet you have great teammates as well.
Yes, we do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you. You too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can say something. You want to say it? You want to say it?
Say something?
Nope.
All right. Okay, good. Okay.
She's done enough talking downstairs.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad we got to bring that in.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's bring us back. So, wow, let's see, guys, I have to go back. Did we finish C?
Yeah, 28. I think we go back to the motion, Judge.
Uh, what were you, yeah.
Yeah. What was your, what was your, so are we done there? Can we get a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna get a motion, but I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, that's fine. Well, motion to approve, I'll make it. And then second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then abstentions. I'm sorry, nay. And then abstentions.
Nick, me, abstention.
I've got an abstention from Gonzalez. All right, E, Lower Colorado River Authority.
Which?
Maria's here to help on this. Who pulled it?
Commissioner Jag.
Commissioner Jag?
Sorry.
On Lower Colorado River Authority?
Yeah, I had a question. He is authorized submission of a grant application for a river authority. I don't understand, does that have to do with the fire marshal or something?
Yeah, the, the title of the grant is kind of confusing. So strangely enough, Susan Roth, our drainage expert, had brought us this grant opportunity because she, I guess, used to be on, on the Lower Colorado River Authority Board. But it's their community development program that's available for, you know, first responders and fire marshals. And so we thought it was a great idea. We actually did apply for this grant, I believe, back in September and were unsuccessful. We applied for 50,000. And 50,000, that, that grant range is, is kind of earmarked for more rural projects. So we were encouraged to apply again, which is what we wanted to do, for a lesser amount. They said about $25,000 would be a more accurate amount for us. So we would like to reapply again for equipment for our fire marshal position in the amount of 25,000.
And there's a $5,000 match?
It's a, it would be a $25,000 grant with about a $5,000 match. That kind of is already budgeted when y'all approve the fire marshal position.
What equipment, what kind of equipment are you talking about for the fire marshal?
We originally had applied for his vehicle, but, you know, since we kind of need to get moving on that process and we won't find out if we are awarded this grant for, you know, another month or so, the application is due on January 31st. It would be, I think he was asking for, we might buy like the equipment that's needed for the vehicle, like inside the vehicle, the lighting. He also needs some storage space for his, like the fire equipment.
Comms, radios.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of-
Everything has a constable's car, except emergency car.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a big question because the, as we know, the court has authorized the purchasing agent to lease all vehicles. So this would be a leased vehicle and the equipment going inside the vehicle, which would be what would be covered here, which is your radios, your, your laptops, your sirens, your lights, your, your other stuff that goes in the back of the car for the fire marshal would be what would be covered here, not the vehicle cost.
Not the vehicle.
Correct.
This will be for just the equipment that goes inside the car.
Yes.
Right. And we thank Susan for bringing this to our attention.
Is there anything here, I mean, is, is training, is he getting his training? Do we pay, can you pay for training so he can get on? Is training, is he getting-
No, this one's for equipment.
Yeah, this one's more as equipment center based. Because it's, you know, it's kind of one of those grants where, you know, you get, you get the money and then they want you to kind of spend it pretty quickly. Whereas training, you have to wait for the trainee to come. And so, yeah.
I know in the beginning, we talked about the training. So I don't know if he's getting training or if he's going through training or, you know, I don't know. Just, I mean, remember we talked about that when we hired him, it's going to, so many hours of training in certain areas.
Chief Rochas handling the coordination of the training?
Well, I just want to make sure the training is in process, you know, whatever.
Right. But this agenda item, are you okay with it?
Sure, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so can we have a motion then? Yes? And a second, please?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next page is K. Is that right?
K.
K? All right, K. Who pulled K?
I did.
All right.
What, what is, when you say emergency rental assistance program, what is it? Department of Treasury, you did?
It would be to, it would be for our social services department to assist those individuals that were impacted by COVID-19 in paying overdue rent or mortgage.
This comes out of the-
It's for citizens in citizen's assistance. For the citizens assistance program.
Yes, yes. Right. But it's for, the city of Corpus Christi has applied as well. This is part of the coronavirus relief package that came out in December.
It's a good program. I mean, I just need to, again, sometimes we have to identify a little bit more, you know, what it's for, I guess, you know. And because, I mean, I thought it was a rental for something else, but, but it's just to provide the citizens with, with assistance, rental assistance. I think we just need to kind of-
I'll make sure that's a little more clear in, in future agenda items.
Like in the marshals, too.
But yeah, it would be, it would be managed by our social services department.
Okay, that's good.
And how much, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I just was wondering, I know you put, it was, the amount wasn't known at the time.
Yeah, we don't know. Yeah, we still don't know. Unfortunately, our allocation was based if the city of Corpus Christi were to apply also. And we did, I did talk to Rudy Bentencourt, who's their grant monitoring department director, and he did indicate that the city of Corpus Christi did apply. So we're still in the process. I was hoping to find an answer before today on what our allocation would be, but I was not able to get that information just yet. I think they're still trying to do, they have like an internal formula that they're using, and they're still trying to determine who in the state of Texas actually submitted their application. We kind of find out, found out about it at the last minute, which is why this is a ratify. It was due back last Tuesday on the 12th. So I think they're still trying to figure out who in Texas applied to, to then, you know, work that formula to see how much we get. But as soon as I know, I can send an email to, to everybody and let you know.
Let us know. And I'd love to see a, you know, press release put out to let the community know. I know this is an issue for so many people in the community are desperate, wondering how they're going to recover from being out of work or just with the lower salaries that they were earning because of all of this. And if we can get the word out and just, even if it's a small amount, so people at least know, for them to try to help out a certain amount of people. Of course, we hope it's a big amount, but I know there's a lot of competition for-
Yeah. I mean, let your constituents know that I know Rebecca did receive some CARES Act funding specific for, you know, rental and utility assistance. So I think she's still spending some of those funds through the emergency food and shelter program through the United Way. So, yeah, there's, there's funding available right now. I don't know how much, but I know she's looking to spend those monies. And then, of course, you know, there's a need here also.
And Maria, I just sent to Tyner so that he can send all commissioners the one pager that we had done on this. So this is what we do when we meet twice a week with Accenture and with Hagerty. Sometimes we focus on the new programs because we need information. So I just sent you the one pager so you can understand them better. It's not just for utilities, it's also for home energy costs. And there are sort of the, the frequently asked questions have been identified for you. So they take the bill and all its complexities and they make it easy for anybody to understand. And the, the nuances, I think, are obviously, you know, what we need to, to study because, you know, that's where they always get you, right?
And I know we have messaging for COVID, and so I just think this is just-
No, this is part of it.
This is part of it.
This is part of it. Everything we do.
Everything that, you know, we can to get the word out, that they're putting out anything on our social media and press release and all of that, just so the community's more aware of it.
Yeah. And, and we will correspond this with the city of Corpus Christi and also with our JPs because of the eviction situation. But this is not a duplicative of any other federally funded rental assistance provided to any other eligible household. And so, you know, there are, they, they cannot receive this assistance, okay, if they're already on Indian Housing Blank Block Grant assisted properties, public housing, or low income housing credits. So trust me when I tell you that first what we do is we, these bills that come out, they're this thick. And then that's why we have these experts, so that we can digest it, understand what we need to apply for, go after it. And by good grace, Hagerty is an expert in this particular arena. So they are going to assist us as soon as we know more about the allocation. By the way, communities have to be 200,000 in population or greater to apply. That means the city of Robstown, the city of Port Aransas, the city of Bishop, the city of Petronilla, Alulsem Baket, that do not qualify for this program. Therefore, we hope the allocation is strong enough to assist our fellow smaller communities. So we are very, very knowledgeable already about this project. How are we doing it? This is exactly what your, your program managers are up to. So every time that we do this, you know, I just want to make sure that we take the rabbit a little bit higher out of the hat. These are exactly the types of programs that this community gets benefited from by having experts help us not only keep us aware of, of applying for them, but how we can utilize them and how we can't utilize them, right? It's, it's absolutely essential. And whereas about on top of it is anybody else in the state of Texas. So I just sent it to Tyner and he'll send it to you. And again, we will message Deluxe once we know more.
And on a related note, I did get an email from Judge Benavides, who was told that the state's eviction diversion program has been extended. They had a pilot program in certain counties, and they have offered that program to New Oasis County. We're trying to get on some webinars and find out some more information. But if I could get that from Judge Benavides or have him come to explain how that program works, that's actual, you know, legal proceedings for evictions that's, that's going to be made available here in New Oasis County. I believe the tenant or the landlords would have to apply through the state and not through the county. But again, we're trying to get some more information on that program and we'll get it to you as soon as we know more.
Really appreciate it, Maria. Okay, that takes us through letter number W.
So move into motion.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Lorenzo. Help me, help me. There, we've got a motion from Gonzalez and a second from, second it. And, or, it was from Hernandez, sorry. Who seconded it? Okay.
I will. Doesn't matter.
No, I, I don't mind. I just, I thought I heard it. Second from Hernandez. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. So, okay, interesting that communication was brought up. So item number W, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I thought we had voted no last time with this.
Yeah, you voted for the no on the six-month professional services contract. And then the very, that very afternoon, we went into an emergency situation as we had a regional hub designation and we needed a PIO on a 24-hour basis. And so I used emergency powers to authorize a three-month contract so that we could do exactly what Commissioner Modis just announced. And that's to let the people know what's going on with our vaccination hub. And as I said, that that vote was going to cost people's lives, and I meant it. And so I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to make, make those decisions that cost people's lives. And so we need to be able to bring this back to you as a ratification. And you have the ability to, to vote, you know, yes or no to the ratification. But the contract will stand as it is, as we are in a federal disaster and we need to have emergency services. And I have a long laundry list, but if you were out there at the site, you know that we were running an entire media tent. And to this moment, we are still in the process of messaging everything about vaccinations, which is absolutely critical since it's so difficult, given that the goalpost keeps changing every day with the state and, and when we get vaccines and how we're going to route them in and how many we do and where they need to go and who's eligible and where the new sites are. And he's working very closely with the city.
Is it Maggie, a PO also?
Yes, she is a PIO. And, and she's also a part of our emergency management team. And she is 100% occupied, just like Connie is 100% occupied doing the work that she's doing with the website.
And Judge, I'm, respectfully, I remain completely, and I don't mean to start a fight, but opposed to the other contract for reasons that we discussed.
I understand.
But I, I also respect the fact that you have emergency powers. I think this is going to be remedied pretty quickly because I've asked, and I know Tyner's already working on it, to put the PIO issue back on the agenda. So begrudgingly, I'm gonna, I'm okay on this one. But I, I just think we need to get a full-time PIO that reports to the court. And I think we need to get that done as fast as possible. And then, then you won't have to do this anymore. So I don't, I don't love it, but again, I do respect the fact that you have the, the emergency powers. I don't love those either, no offense to you. I think, you know, at all, and that's not what that was aimed at, it really isn't. I just think those powers are, are difficult. But you have them, I respect it. And I'm, like I say, begrudgingly okay with this, but I really want to get back on this PIO so that we can stop doing this. Not because of trying to pick a fight, but because we need this. I mean, we need a full-time PIO that reports to this court because no county that I know of this size doesn't have something like that. And, and I mean, it, but it, so we've gotta, we've gotta get off to where we can stop doing this. And you don't have to go out and run, find someone, because there's someone that's here all the time.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate that. And, and there's, there's a real, real need. Everything is driven by communications in this incident, from Facebook and Twitter to website, coordination with the city, coordination with the health district, coordination with our AD providers, everything we do, we, we have to do it 24/7 in an emergency crisis way. So it's not even a PIO. Maggie handles PIO. When we have, and Tyner is, is a great assistant, when it comes, we pull him in even sometimes because it's a governmental situation, like we had with animal care yesterday, or with road closures, or if it's official business, we got that covered. This is an official, this is a part of a disaster. And I will tell you that people, people die when you don't message things correctly. And we've got all kinds of issues every day. We've got national media, we've got state media, we have Tedom that we coordinate with. And if you're onsite, you'll understand it very easily what's going on. It's an absolutely full-time, in the evenings, at midnight, Saturdays, Sundays, holidays. Nobody stops when you're inside a disaster and a crisis. And, and so, again, we're going to make sure people get the information they need to save their lives. And that's what a vaccine is all about. And at this point, like I said, it's, it's reimbursable and, and it's-
That was the other thing I meant to say.
It is reimbursable.
This is re, and that's the other-
Absolutely. Anything we do inside this response that's justified- Absolutely. Anything we do inside this response that's justified, that meets the criteria, which this one does, as all his other times were. But you're not going to bring somebody in on the fly and go, here, go message this. That's just not how it works. You've got to be able to take these informational pieces and, and on the fly, get them coordinated with your other jurisdictions. And I will tell you that we got some really great praise from the city manager just this week on communications. There are times where Deanna has to, who's their PIO, has to go write something, and then we need somebody else to go turn around and write something else, too. And every word means something. Words matter. And if you confuse the public, bad things can happen. If you, if you understand public information and crisis management on communication, you'll understand that this is helping our citizens. They deserve it. They deserve messaging and communications. It's the most important, one of the most important aspects of this crisis. And so the ratification is not, not required, but it's certainly helpful. And so with that-
And again, I just want to, you know, state, I think the faster we get this PIO, we, the faster we don't have, the more we don't have to do this anymore. And, and then you'll have that position. So again, I would really stress, I know you're working on it, I know you're getting Julie involved, and I appreciate it. I'd really like to see this on the next agenda. And I'm not saying we approve it, I'm just saying we at least start discussing and talking about what we want.
Well, I mean, and that'll have to be a, a budget discussion, and, and, and we can do that because, just so you know, it is-
And I don't like doing that during the year. I've said that. But I believe we need a PIO bad enough to where I'm willing to do it, but I don't like it.
And I want to discuss that. But at this point, we have an agenda item, and I want to keep us rolling. And so-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay on that one, Judge.
All right, that's, that's fine. Let me, I'll motion to approve the ratification of the action.
Second.
And I've got a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Abstention?
Infusion.
I've got one abstention, two abstentions. Is that correct?
I think yeah.
Three abstentions?
No, I'm an aye.
He had a nay. He's a nay. He's an abstention.
Aye.
He's an aye. Okay. Three ayes, one nay, and one abstention. Okay. Was X pulled?
Yes.
Okay. Carol Weaver, just for information?
Yeah, just really because I wanted to, again, stress, I'm sorry. Abstention and a nay and-
Nay, abstention, and three yays.
On X, I, I was really just wanting to pull it because, and Juan's not here, but that's my fault. I should have told him to be here. But I, I really just wanted to make sure that the, the folks out in London area knew that this was coming. We are authorizing the execution of this today. This is a big, big project in the London area. It's really going to be a, a massive help for traffic flow and access and just all kinds of things. We'll be able to do some roadworks and utility work, help with drainage. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a really good project. I appreciate the court's support on it. And so I really wanted to make sure that anybody who was watching knows that this is coming, and to thank the court for the support for getting this project pushed forward. And that was all I have, and I would motion to pass.
Second.
Okay. Motion at a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I've got listed here, that's the last one, but someone double check?
Double E.
Double E, sorry, sorry. Double E was I-69. That was Commissioner Modis.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Who's the, who's the lead on this, Tyner? Are you, or?
Well, I would say I'm probably the lead.
The judge is actually on the board.
Judge, because I know you're on the board.
I'm on the board.
So I know we already voted and approved on this, under special motions, this 10,750. So it's just more question on, Judge, if you can get us an update on, on Driscoll, I mean, I've gotten the updates on, on, on the route that's going around Driscoll, the I-69 route. And there's also even the state component from Highway 44 that's connecting to 69 going through Robstown as it's connecting to go north. So if we can just get an update, I don't know if there's anyone from the Alliance, or you want to do it?
Yeah.
Or if it's, if, we can reduce the amount of time in the meeting. It doesn't have to be a meeting agenda item. If it, maybe you can just send us an update on that, just so we can see the stage that they're at.
Yes, sir.
That's been completed so far. I mean, I visually see it, you know, and when I drive by, and you can see it all being built. But if we can just get that to the court, that would just be helpful.
Yeah, so I could have sent it to you, but I'm gonna send it to Tyner as well, so he can send it to the court. So we have a, by pure coincidence, it came in on January 11th. So we have an update, and it basically talks about Nueces County project. But do you mind if I just add, just take two sentences, even though you'll get more details. But since you bring it up, we were awarded $7.7 million by the Transportation Commission to Nueces County to construct US 77 freeway ramps at Bishop. This is part of the 23-mile section of US 77 from Robstown through Kingsville that will be completed to interstate standard in the next two years. So that's my quick, sort of quickie update. But let me also tell you that your contact is a lady named Jennifer Shepherd. She's outstanding. And here's one more thing. I would love to see if you could help me, because I know with the way vaccines and COVID works, there's just not enough of me. But between February 17th and 19th, there's a series called I-69 Austin Days. I'm pretty sure there'll be Zooms, and maybe you could represent me on one of those days and really try to, you know, hone in on your area and, and bring us back some more information. But my experience with the Alliance is incredibly positive. I'm, I'm a part of the team that works with the other large urban county judges. I've been trying to get Harris County to come in. They're the only big county that's not in. And it's crazy, because I-69 comes right through there. So we've been sharing, Tyner's been helping, and this was Judge Neal's passion, was I-69. And, and I've served both for the port and, and now here. So the big thing that we need to worry about is what will Congress do with regards to transportation and infrastructure. So it all boils down to dollars. But I'm very proud to tell you that I love what I'm seeing with this additional $7.7 million. But I think that you'd, you'd look, you'd want to see the map and some of the things that, that we can bring. So this I-69 Austin Day is quite important because, and again, it's going to be virtual, but it's with the right legislators and staff. And of course, it'll be with our friend Terry Canelas. And, well, if he, you know, stays with his chair, with his appointment. And we're working on all these discussions of what the agenda would look like. So I'm going to forward it to you, and, and we will have Jennifer maybe give us a Zoom update as well. That'd be great.
Sounds good. Thank you, Judge.
You bet.
Motion to approve.
And, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, that takes us through the consent agenda. And I'm going to see if we can maybe get through the regular agenda. And then I'd like to take a, a small break, a small recess for lunch, and, and come back so that we can participate in our nation's festivities that we've actually already missed most of, but we can see them around the clock, I bet, 24/7. But at any rate, let's move on to receiving a presentation from Melissa Mason, who's the Executive Director of CCDMD, one of my favorite groups, the Downtown Management District. She's got a report on activities, but this is a call to action as well. She's got a, a contract for the, and I'll just make sure that the county attorney says that we are in good order before we vote on that, and that she's appro, you know, she likes what she sees. And if she does, then we will vote on this approval for the new year, the contract. And I'll ask you, Melissa, if there were any changes that we should be aware of in that contract.
No, Judge, there are no-
I didn't think so, but I just want to make sure. The same as last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that makes it easy to, to approve. Please continue. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for having me this morning. We really do look forward to this annual update to this court about what we are undertaking at the Downtown Management District. We will be issuing a video next week about the state of downtown, especially with the COVID-19 pandemic, and how we've responded and pivoted throughout downtown. So this will be a little bit of a preview. But this is our annual report. So I'm here representing the Downtown Management District, as well as the Reinvestment Zone, which we are contracted to manage. Next slide. So I like to start presentations with this slide, because I think it really synthesizes that our work downtown is not really focused on just improving one particular part of the city for the benefit of that part of the city. It really is a countywide and regional undertaking, because this statement, I think, goes well to explain how the condition of downtown really sets the scene for our entire region. It states that downtown is the only part of the city that belongs to everybody. It doesn't matter where you may find your home, the downtown is yours, too. Investing in the downtown of a city is the only place-based way to benefit all of its citizens at once. And there's more. Every relocation decision, be it a college graduates or corporations, is made with an image of a place in mind. And that image is palpable, and it is powerful. It is resolutely physical, a picture of buildings, streets, squares, cafes, and the social life those places engender. Whether good or bad, that image is hard to shake, and with rare exception, that image is of downtown. And that is from a book called Walkable City by Jeff Speck. So I think this really goes well to state that while we are reporting on downtown and our accomplishments as the district, it is in partnership with the county and our other institutions, that we work to improve this asset for the benefit of our entire region. Next slide. So about the Downtown Management District, I want to kind of overview very quickly how our organization has evolved. Many of you know, the DMD has existed since 1993, but our organization today looks very different than it did back in that time. In 2013, the property owners voted to extend our district through 2023. We will be coming up for renewal here in a few years. In 2015, our Executive Director led us down a district branding initiative. This is a best practice across the country. The term downtown was a little confusing, what actually was downtown. So we rebranded that core boundary, the Municipal Management District, the Marina Arts District, freeing up the term downtown to refer to the larger area. In 2016, we were contracted with the Reinvestment Zone to manage incentives for the larger downtown area. So you can see that our organization looks very different than it did in 1993.
Thank you.
Next slide. Our mission is to create a successful district. We have four main areas of operation: making downtown clean and safe, developing and improving the district, marketing and promoting the district, and building and managing an effective, dynamic organization that's led by national best practices. Next slide. And again, just to drive that back home one more time, our organization has grown and changed significantly. With the help of the county, your participation in the Reinvestment Zone, and our Advisory Council, you've enabled us to accomplish great things. Next slide. Our organization is charged with implementing the Downtown Area Development Plan. This is the first time, really in modern history, that we were given a, a map by a professional planning organization. It looked at different economic analysis back in 2014, and it was adopted by the city. And so our organization is charged with implementing that plan. It's action-oriented, market-driven, and really charges towards development. And on the next slide, we talk about the main focus area. So encouraging market-driven development, creating more housing choices, completing that trail network and connecting the area and downtown, and then celebrating it as a unique place to live, work, and play. Next slide. We do annual reports. So we work on strategic plans that run from three to five years, and then we have individual annual service plans. So I will be reporting to, to you today on our FY20 Annual Service Plan. We did end up extending our strategic plan for one year due to the COVID-19 crisis. Last summer, we were supposed to go through a new strategic planning initiative, but it was a little difficult to do that when all our bars and restaurants were closed, and we were in the midst of the global pandemic. So we will be endeavoring to undertake that initiative this coming summer. Next slide. Okay, now that I've reoriented you to the DMD and given an update on our organization, I'm going to go over some of our FY2020 accomplishments and some highlights. There's more detail in the report that was provided, but here are some high points. Next slide. So under District Operations, remember keeping downtown clean, safe, and beautiful. We had quite a few initiatives. We had that eight-person clean team out maintaining the district every day. We installed cigarette butlers and dog waste stations throughout the district. We noticed that that was a source of a lot of waste, so we proactively went and made improvements to mitigate that waste. We facilitated improvements to the Artesian Park, our 166-year-old park, the oldest park in the city. We installed some lighting. We installed new landscaping and irrigation. Additionally, we hosted an electrical box mural competition and dedicated eight new murals along Water Street. Next slide. Here are the statistics of our downtown clean team. You can see there was a bit of a change in some of the patterns. For instance, we collected less bags of debris because there were less people downtown. Some of our restaurants, bars weren't operating for a period. But that was made up with landscaping maintenance, maintaining some of those beautiful planters. We get a lot of positive feedback on. And you can see another trend is that we have had increased maintenance of biohazard. So that will be a continued focus area for us, working on the homeless issues and some of the impacts of that. Our clean team is out there mitigating it daily. But we do think that that uptick in that statistic gives us an indication that we need to pay more attention there. You can see we've also improved our activities per hour, so we've increased efficiencies even during the global pandemic. Next slide. On development and improve, we've continued to manage the tourist incentives. Again, we manage that for the larger tourist boundary. We facilitated seven facade improvements. We worked with the city to establish sidewalk cafes for the first time. We worked with eight businesses to do that. A&amp;M did finally purchase a building in the middle of our downtown, which is a great accomplishment. We had that signing ceremony last December. And we had a record reduction in vacant storefronts and entirely vacant buildings, although we had a little bit of change there as well with the COVID, with the COVID virus. We did see a record low right before the virus hit. Next slide. We have a map here. This is a map that we continue to track. We let, we track our catalytic projects that are completed, as well as important development projects we have underway. Our priority development projects underway are pink. So you can see the Nueces County Courthouse is listed there and plotted. And we can see that really goes towards some efforts we are putting into the C District. We have a lot of activity in the Marina Arts District, a lot of businesses that have opened up. Next slide. And we like to do some before and afters. We feel like these are particularly impactful. So you can see, here are some before photos, and next, we have some after photos. So the Residence Inn, the Marriott Residence Inn on Shoreline completed construction, got put into use. Goldfish, it had been reopened as a bar, but it got even more investment and more upgrades. It has some really nice capacity and outdoor container facility, upgraded restrooms. We have, the bottom photo is of Rondovee Apartments. This was a building that had been put out of use due to a fire. It was purchased and rehabilitated, and 24 new units were put back into the market. So some other projects we had this year, the Edward Jones and Cosmopolitan Shops at Case Base. Case Base Art Collective expanded to a retail facility right on the corner of Chaparral and Star Street. We had Oasis Market open in the First Community Bank Building. Dokyo Downtown opened. Akka Sushi relaunched after a significant reinvestment. The Goldfish relaunched, as I mentioned. Oyster Bar and Sushi Room had significant remodeling and reinvestment. Produced Sound Studios and Retail relaunched on People Street, and that is the undertaking of Dusty Olavedia. So we still were able to make progress in our downtown area during this time. Next slide. And the pictures are nice, but so are the numbers. So this tracks over the last four years, as we've been managing the incentives for the downtown area. We have seen a $33 million increase in ad valorem value due to the programs that we've administered. So whenever the tourist was originally created, I believe it was throwing off like $50,000 a year. Right now, I think we're at 1.9. So that is really have been, that's been our focus, trying to make this tool work effectively so that we could have more funding to reinvest in the zone. And then the concept is, at the end, all of the taxing entities benefit from the higher property values, right? And we had a beautiful rehabilitated downtown. Next slide. So some of the more marketing-oriented items that we do, right, when we have these businesses, we still need to drive people to our downtown, so that feeds into our communication and events component. We created some virtual shopping guides, especially during the pandemic. Some of our recently opened vintage shops were seeing a drop in activity. So we wanted to drive people there, so we created that program. We created a self-driving tour of the eight new electrical box murals. People really enjoyed going down there, taking photos with the murals, and getting food while we're there, because of our downtown restaurants. On Instagram, we hit 15,000 followers. I will update you that as of today, we are at 17,200 followers. That really is the medium of choice for our target market, people who typically patronize downtown. We really, our sweet spot is that 20-somethings that go downtown, because they're really just exploring and wanting to live in a big city. So we're excited about continuing to develop that following. Our art walk event was listed as a best date night from The Bend Magazine. We celebrated our 100th Bridgewater. And we launched our holiday event series, relaunched our holiday event series, with components like Deck Downtown, the Mayor's Battle of the Bulbs Lighting Competition, and Peppermint Lane. And of course, this report is for fiscal year, so that was really when we launched the items. But we just completed another successful holiday series, where we extended the lights on Chaparral Street. We expanded the lights in Artesian Park, the port- The Port partnered with us to put a new Christmas tree installation in La Rotama Park. And we are now the keepers of the 66-foot HEB Christmas tree. So we've really gotten into that holiday business, and we plan to expand and continue each year to give our community something to enjoy. Next slide. Specifically and related to COVID-19, we launched a series of programs, starting with our Support Local Curbside, Welcome Back programs. We created a curbside program in partnership with the city. We had signage out on March 17th before the governor even shut dining rooms down, so we were very proactive in that. We switched to virtual and hybrid art walks so that there was still some consistency. We heard a lot of positive feedback from the community that people appreciated that we kept that going even though we weren't gathering in person. And then we collaborated with social media influencers throughout our community to, again, drive trips to our downtown. So Corpus Christi bucket lists, we had a super fun kind of map experience through our downtown, and then our Support Local program where our residents were invited to take photos and post that they ate food from our downtown restaurants, and they earned a really great shirt that you can see is photographed here in exchange for doing so. Next slide. We raised $102,500 in the advisory council, partly due to this court's generous contribution, so we sincerely appreciate you. We earned Main Street accreditation, which is pretty significant. This is the first time that our organization has been accredited by the National Main Street Association. Of course, we did modify and switch to remote work during the real crux of the COVID-19 crisis. So we were able to modify and switch to that very seamlessly. And then I served as the interim CEO of the Convention and Visitors Bureau for half of the year, in addition to everything that we just went over. So our organization continued to work and be effective. And now there's a new CEO at Corpus Christi, Brett Otting, who's welcomed support to our community. Next slide. In just a little bit more detail, this is a pie chart that shows the funding of our organization. So we have our property owners who pay a levy. The city matches that dollar for dollar. We have the contract with the reinvestment zone, which the county participates in. And then we have our advisory council, which is a collection of corporate leaderships in different institutions, which the county also participates in. Next slide. So this represents the advisory council, the Port AEP, Valero HEB, the county, Fusilquina, CCISD, American Bank, Frost, and San Jacinto make up that advisory council. Next slide. And that is it for the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you again.
Thanks, Alyssa. You've completely changed the way we're doing business downtown. You've inspired a lot of development because people know that you're making an effort through the DMD to make it beautiful. And it's really, really showcased in this presentation that you provided to us.
Thank you, Judge.
So I'm very pleased. Is there any, are there any questions for Alyssa?
Very good.
And...
No, I was just going to say, Alyssa, I think you've done a great job, and I really appreciate, I know you had to step in and do some interim roles while all that was going on, so thank you very much. I think you've done a great job. You know, I've lived here my whole life, and when I came back to Corpus Christi a long time ago after college, you know, downtown was such a blight. It just, I don't know how else to say it, it really just was. And it's not where we want it to be, we all know that, but it's made such great strides, and a lot of that is because of your organization and you and the leadership that have come. So thank you very much. It's appreciated. We need to keep pushing and do things, but it's cool to drive around and see some of the stuff that's down there now. And, you know, we do have a, I'm going to say a semi-vibrant downtown, and that's not a knock because it used to be a blight. So I mean, going from, in my opinion, going from blight to semi-vibrant is huge steps, so I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Alyssa, you've done a, you have done a great job, you, your board, your employees. First of all, I'd like to see if we can get an electronic copy of your presentation.
Sure, absolutely, yes, sir.
Just because I stopped writing down, I just wanted to listen to everything you were saying. So if you can get that to Tyner so he can send that out to the court. But, you know, I, over the last few years especially, have spent a lot of time in downtown. I find myself, well, pre-COVID, going to, you know, enjoy the bus and places like that. But, you know, when you look out and you're just enjoying, you know, company that you're there with, and you see all this traffic, foot traffic and car traffic, you know, at nighttime, on the weekends, or even during the weekdays, you just, you get that feel of, wait a minute, am I still in Corpus Christi? And then you say, yes, I am. And it's great that we have that draw for our community, that, you know, our young people and all people can really go and enjoy the different venues. I mean, you walk by, you see the tattoo shop is open late, you know, and you can, you can hop from Goldfish to the bus to, to all the other...
Muse now?
Yes, to all of it. So, and before, it used to be almost just one or two little corner lots that you had. And so there's, I think, a lot of excitement there. Even, you see, in COVID, you see some people that are getting out and trying to keep these businesses up and going. And so it's just through hard work, and I'm glad that the county is a part of this effort to help, you know, support in some way. And you're just doing an excellent job. You know, my experience, I was, I was the downtown representative for city council for about six years until my city council district got zoned out, we redistricted. And so, but I was there for six years and really got to see some of the groundwork that was really starting to kind of get us turned around. But the work that you have done is amazing. I mean, you coming from the city over, over there, it's, it's a lot to be said. And so I hope your board is doing everything they can to make you happy and keep you here and keep you, keep the package that you have competitive, because I'm sure any city would be happy to want to take you away, although I know it helps that you have roots here.
Absolutely, yes, thank you, Commissioner. No, I pinch myself every day that this is my job. This is really, it's a, it's a dream, and, you know, our whole team is motivated. We have a lot of people from Corpus Christi, and we're just excited that, that we get to do this.
And your cleanup crew, love it. Every time I'm down there, you just see them, they're constantly working, they're constantly up there, you know, just keeping the grounds looking great so that...
Thank you.
When people come, you know, they're, they're going to enjoy a nice, clean environment. And especially on days like, you know, like we've been having where we have beautiful blue skies and all the, the, I wanted to really mention this, all the different components, the bars and restaurants that have the outside component, it's been, I guess, maybe a result, some were doing it, but a result of COVID to really spread out people from being inside. But you get that big city feel, right? You think of Austin, you think of Dallas, you think of all these other cities and beyond Texas, where you walk by and you see all these eateries that you can enjoy the weather outside. You don't have to be just locked inside indoors to have a drink or eat.
Right.
So I think that that has really been kind of a mixed blessing in a sense that we're getting more people kind of just drawn. And so when people are driving by, they're seeing all this excitement. And so I just, I love hearing about the updates that we see in downtown Corpus Christi. I think it's a model, you know, I represent also Robstown and says, you know, they have that Main Street that's really great, but, you know, the fact that, that y'all are really able to incorporate, you know, all the uptown and downtown and all the synergy that's going between is really what we need. And I know people are supporting it because you see them there during the lunch hour, evening, and late at night. So thank you for everything.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Excuse me, Alyssa, I also applaud you for your efforts. I can see the difference in downtown. Is there still plans to change some streets to a two-way street?
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez. We actually have a project underway right now. It's, it's a little complicated, so we're having to do it kind of, we're doing it in phases. Chaparral was the first street that we converted in 2018. It was very controversial at the time, so we had to do a lot of education and outreach to convince everyone to let us try. Right now, the project that's underway is converting the one-block portions between Shoreline and Water Street on Star, Peoples, Schatzel, Lomax, and John Sartain. That is the biggest complaint that we get. People turn the wrong way, get very intimidated, they get panicked, and then they've had a negative experience right off the bat trying to get into downtown. Right, exactly. They're like, oh no. So we're going to correct that, and then we'll see kind of systematically what signage we need to accommodate. It's a balance. We have, you know, on-street parking, we need to make sure we keep that supply, so we'll move forward with it as quickly as we can. Another priority for us this, this coming year is going to be reconnecting the pedestrian connections, especially to the seawall. We know the city is putting a lot of effort and focus into the marinas, so we're going to assist with that, knit that back together. That really is our competitive advantage when it comes to our downtown area and the thing that truly sets us apart, that beautiful bayfront seawall and all that connectivity. So that is a long answer to your question, but yes, sir.
Well, it's going to be a good improvement for the downtown area. Appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Make sure you use the big, bright signs.
Yes.
You know, the two-way, not one-way.
Yes, sir. We have a, we will be, we will have 23 signs that say "Now Two-Way" peppered throughout this, these five streets when the project is completed, until everyone gets used to it.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
There's so many more great things to say, but I, we want you, we would like to invite you to come back. Maybe we can talk about the Asicora Robinson, you know, project that the city undertook to really understand economic development in the downtown arena and just got completed. And maybe we can have you here when we do our economic impact unveiling of the Paramin Report.
Absolutely, that'd be lovely.
So I think I'll just hold and say, job well done, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 contract, given that it's substantial, it's completely the same, and I just want to make sure from the attorney that it's, that we are ready to sign.
Yes.
We're ready to sign. Okay, so I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, I do have a question for housekeeping reasons. I really do need to take a recess for an urgent matter that, that needs to be dealt with, with regards to vaccines, and I was going to do it anyway to take the lunch break, so this might be a good point, but I am concerned about Sherilyn Boyd and want to make sure that her issue, if she's able to come after lunch at the 12:45 hour. Tyner, Sherilyn?
What is her? Which one was she on, Jessica?
She's on item number three. Oh, there you are. Sherilyn, do you have an ability to hang with us, as they say, and come back after lunch at 12:45 to take up your item?
Yes, ma'am, sure do.
Okay, I, I'm greatly appreciative. And Dr. Shakar as well, you're, you're coming up next. So two and three. So at this point, I will recess us out and call us back at the 12:45 hour. And the time for the clerk is 11:50. Have lunch, go see the inauguration, and...
What time do you want to come back?
Yeah, I said to Dr. Shaker as well. I'd already commented about that. 12:45-ish?
12:45?
I mean, an hour from now, I guess 12:50-ish, around there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, Gavel, listen. We are, time-wise, for the clerk, at 12:55 PM, and we last left off on our regular agenda item, item number two. Discuss and consider approval of an inter-local agreement with Hidalgo County for medical examiner's services. On the phone with us is Dr. Shaker for, he can be a resource, but we also have the resource of the county attorney and Tyner, who I believe worked this inter-local as a, as a team effort. Who would like to take the lead? I'm, I'm happy to yield here.
Judge, I do have some notes on this. What this is, we've received some information that doing this would be preferable. We actually have a, a position that would assist, and the money paid by Hidalgo would help fund a new autopsy technician. And if there's a Dr. Adele on now...
Shakar.
But we understand they have the capacity to do this, and we would like to hear comments from the medical examiner.
Okay, sounds good. Let's hear some comments from the doctor. He'll just need to unmute himself.
He's still connecting.
Oh, he's connecting. Okay, well, I'll just set the table just a little bit. So yeah, this basically is the paper trail, if you will, that's needed and necessary between two counties when we are accepting their deceased for autopsy and for us to perform services. We've often discussed this, that there is a huge shortage in our country of pathologists, and COVID-19 has really created a real concern for the need in, particularly in South Texas, where we were disproportionately affected in death. And as a result, Hidalgo has asked us on occasion to perform work, and we prefer to do this work with an inter-local agreement in place. That's really the bottom line. We're doing the work, we follow the statute. The money is, helps us, as Tyner says, to be able to fund the extra technician that we need. And of course, if we can't do the work, we won't do the work, right? It's, it's, the ability is, if it exists and we can help, we will, but we got to have a governing document, and that's what this inter-local agreement is. And Dr., did I give him enough time? Dr. Shaker, would you like to comment about the inter-local? It seems to be in good working order as far as we know. Do you have any comments to make for the court? Give him just a second. Doctor, there we go.
Hey, good afternoon, Judge.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners Gonzalez, Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Morris, and Commissioner Hernandez. I'm Dr. Shaker, and this is regarding Hidalgo. Luckily enough, we have Hidalgo to add some revenue to our county as the numbers are decreasing from the surrounding counties every year. But after that inter-local agreement, we managed to have in less than a couple of months 54 cases with a revenue of over $214,000. We collected yesterday $55,000, and I'm sorry, I'm in scraps because I was in the back doing a couple of autopsies for Hidalgo today.
No, that's, don't worry, that's fine. That's what we wanted to hear, doctor, is that, that you're able to do it, that we are recovering the dollars, and in fact, the dollars are quite helpful to the revenue because you're able to use it to hire additional folks that, that you might need for our work and their work. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, quick question. Doctor, my history serves me, I, we always used to get these letters from Dr. Fernandez saying, "Don't do these, don't do these, don't do these," unless I'm mistaken, it may not have been to Hidalgo County specifically. So, because he was always concerned about the capacity that we had, you know, to do it. So that would be my question, are we, I mean, in other words, are you sure this is not going to overload y'all to the point at which you're going to have to come back and say, "We need more staff, we need more this, we need more," you know, because I don't want to, I don't want to not help people, but I want to make sure that Oasis County's taken care of and, and the counties that we have to, you know, deal with around us. So I'm a little concerned about this, so make me feel better, please.
Well, he's already, how many have you done already to prove the point that you can do it?
I did 54 cases last couple of months.
Right, and so does that overload you, is what I'm asking?
And this month, we received approximately 15 cases.
Right, so what I'm asking is...
During the first two weeks.
So what I'm asking is this...
And I assume that Commissioner Chesney is concerned about how can I manage it? If I have the tools and the human power, I can do that, so that's why I'm requesting an extra technician to handle the work with me.
So, Doctor, give him, Doctor, I mean, Commissioner Chesney, I almost made you a doctor. Commissioner Chesney has a question, and here it goes.
So I was just, so what I'm, and I'm sorry, I couldn't understand exactly everything you're saying. So my concern is, is I don't have a doubt you can do it. My concern is, is it's going to overload you and your staff to where it's going to require additional funding or facility needs or things of that nature, and that we're not going to be able to, because there's only so much time you can spend on these things, and I don't, I think we're down one now, aren't we? I mean, aren't you the only medical examiner at the moment? Am I right on that?
We have contract.
We have some contracts.
I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead. Tell him, tell him the help that you have, sir.
Yeah, I have part-time, Dr. Fernandez is helping, and somebody else is joining us on the board recently. So I have two extra help on the medical background.
And so you don't, you don't believe this is going to overload you to where you're going to have to come back to us and ask for more resources to help cover this, right? I mean, that's, that's what I want to make sure.
Well, in fact, there is a human resource element here, but it's paid for with the extra revenue about four times or five times over. In fact, that's- that's going to be an important piece of it, Commissioner, is D2 is related to this in a way. But just so you know, the interlocal agreement is incidental. You have to have an interlocal agreement. There's going to be times where one medical examiner is going to need to rely on another medical examiner for a multitude of reasons. There could be conflicts, there could be issues that, for whatever capacity, COVID-19. The interlocal is the- is the part of the agreement that is good. It's protecting our county because it outlines the contract with the other county. So I consider the interlocal agreement essential for any and all circumstances, whether we do one, zero, or 54. It's up to Dr. Shaker to manage his, you know, quite frankly, hu- human capital and his caseload, and he has to put in Oasis first.
The local agreement, I don't know if it's done yet or not, but do we have the right in the local agreement to say, "We can't take more patients from Hidalgo right now because we are overloaded here," or do we have to take them from Hidalgo regardless of how many patients we have in Oasis County?
Yeah, still, the situation is under control because I'm not working alone. I have two part-time helpers, and I'm asking only for one technician to clear the load and the caseload.
You're making enough money to pay for that technician, you said?
Yes, the projected amount is 214,000 for already what we received from Hidalgo. 214,000 for the number of cases, yes.
So, and I understand, Judge and Dr. Rick, this is a- this is a technicality, that we have to have this in place. My concerns are, and that was a good question that Commissioner Gonzalez asked, as long as we're not entering into something that says, "We have to do these," or whatever the case may be. I mean, if you- if you- because if you get overloaded with Oasis County cases, I get that the revenue is important, but I also, you know, want to serve our county more than I want to serve, no offense, Hidalgo's. So I get that you have to have an agreement to do any of these, and that's- that's good business to do that. But I just want to make sure that I'm not interested in taking on more burden that doesn't pay for itself. Sounds like this does, that's good. I'm not interested in taking on more responsibility that we have to do. Sounds like this doesn't. So I- this seems okay, but at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're not- and I think that's what Commissioner Gonzalez was asking too, putting ourselves in a- that we have to do it. And I guess, Jenny, if this is- if you've reviewed this interlocal agreement and there's no binding, if we can't do it, we just can't do it, right?
I see where- I see your question. That could be defined more clearly, but it does say, um, oh, sorry. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that could be defined more clearly, but I- I'm comfortable with it as it's written. It's been reviewed in my office, and if you want some changes, we could go back and look at that.
I just want to- I just, if there's a way to tighten it up to where it's clear, if it needs to be, again, you're the- you're the attorney, if you're telling me that this doesn't bind us to have to do it, and it's just the document as the judge excl- or talked about that we need to have in place, then I'm okay with that too. I just don't want to overload us and have to- have to pay for it. And I do like that it's a return on investment, and it sounds like it's good. I'd like that to be a nice analysis to see, Dale, if there's a way to bring us that. I didn't see that in our packet, but that would be helpful to me because I'm always an ROI guy. So if- if you're telling me that this is a moneymaker for us, then you got my attention. You know, I mean, if you're telling me this, I'd like to see that, and that'd be awesome.
And I want to point you guys to the contract that's in your notebooks, and basically, the covenant is very much mutuality. So it means you've got to mutually agree. So if we don't agree, we're fine. The first- the first, the preambles, the recitals are very, very clear. It was well-written by the county attorney's office. It basically says, whereas the requesting county desires to obtain the service, and whereas Oasis County desires to accept, the, you know, the- the postmortem examination. And you have to basically mutually agree. So I think it's a good- it's got plenty of protection there for our-
And that's how I read it too, Judge. I just like to have legislative intent. It's kind of one of those old things I'd like to do. And so I'd like the county attorney to go out on a limb and tell her- tell us what she thinks and gives us her opinion. And then I would like to see the analysis, you know, on how it could be a moneymaker, because I'm all about moneymakers. That's- that's great.
Yes, Commissioner, all based on the- the amount of service that the ME does. He has a chart of fees of what they charged for the counties, whether it's a full autop- a full autopsy or a partial autopsy, or whatever might be the case. The ME's already established set fees that- for these services for all the counties that we have in the region. And he goes to this on a routine basis to make sure that they are justifiable to the amount of work that he needed to do and recover. And because these are out of the county's services, we do have an agreement with the ME of they- he does maintain a little bit of a commission on the fees. It's not a significant amount, but there is a commission. Last year, I believe, we recovered about $150,000 to $200,000 additional revenue from the autopsies he did in the region, not including Hidalgo, but there are some. So if he does a full autopsy, that may be $2,000 or $3,000 charged to the- to the Hidalgo County, and this, just based on the amount of services that he provides.
How does that work?
Based on the- the- either the justice of the peace, or the sheriff, or whether in the county that they have in the region, will ask the medical examiner to either do a full autopsy, a partial autopsy, or review, and the doctor may be able to expand- expand on that. And that determines the amount of charges that we charge the other county for those services.
I thought you meant somebody was keeping a commission.
Yes.
And let me just also say, there's a termination notice clause in here, 90 days upon basically notice. So you've got with notice and without notice regarding- there's default agri- I mean, payment agreement. They've actually certified to us that the requesting county has a budget of up to $700,000 a year. Can I tell you something? We ought to- we ought to pass this in a nanosecond. It's so good for us. I mean-
Judge, it's not that we don't want it. This is great.
Commissioner?
It's not that we don't want it. This is great.
I'm just- I'm pointing out that you haven't read the document.
No, I didn't get the document.
Have you read the document, sir?
I didn't get the document.
The document's in your packet, sir.
I didn't see it in my packet.
Well, here's your notebook. Let me give it to you.
I'm sorry, I apologize. But anyway, I just want to say, you know, I just, again, the county attorney, this is a great idea. I love it. They were collecting money, and they'll pay for some. I'm just saying, if we at one point say, "We can't take anybody today or the next few days," will be- it'll be okay, I mean, for us to say?
The document is going to protect us because so far, it's my understanding, we've already done several autopsies, and this is going to help us collect for those that have been done before we go forward and do any more.
I just wanted to know, if we say, "No, we can't take them today," no, wait till four days from now, we'll be okay. We won't be in trouble.
Oh, the bodies?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying, if we're overloaded, and they say, "They want to give us 10 bodies today," and we say, "Wait a minute, we're overloaded here, but can you wait four days or we can't take them right now?" I mean, I just- I just want to make sure we're clear on that part. I mean, this is a great idea, and it brings money, and I'm for it, but I just want to make sure, if there's a day we say, "We can't take them right now because we're overloaded."
I would defer to Dr. Shaker on the practice in that respect.
We get them in and out on the same day, so there is no overload in the capacity of the mall or in the coolers. We clear them on the same day.
And just for clarification, the exhibits are not clearly marked. The first exhibit A is referred to in the contract, is the form that appears before the contract, I believe. And the fee schedule is exhibit B, but it follows the contract, but it is not clearly labeled exhibit B, but that does need to be specified.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Okay. Thank you. I have to look it up.
There is a mass fatality paragraph that states, in the event there are 10 or more fatalities, that the requesting county must provide adequate storage.
Correct.
Cold storage, so that protects us in the event of mass fatalities.
Right.
From the requesting county.
As a matter of fact, when we had a mass fatality in this county in 2019, and we did not have enough storage for our own people, it was Hidalgo County that gave us the trailer to host those bodies.
Great, yes, good.
So, okay, so do you-
Hold on, I'll give it another second.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, Ms. Boyd, thank you for your patience. We have agenda item number three to request from, I'm guessing the proper way to say it is Barrison, Inc., to amend the deed restrictions on the Corpus Christi Bay outlets property. And we have Crossroads District being represented today by Sherilyn Boyd. And Tyner, would you elaborate on the request? And then we'll allow Ms. Boyd to elaborate on- on- as well.
I believe Sherilyn Boyd had the opportunity to come speak to you, I think, Judge.
Correct.
And you directed them to come to me.
Yes.
For me to collect information from them on what they were requesting. Belinda helped me look up some deed restrictions. So to give a little background, as the court may recall, we- we owned 512 acres at the fairgrounds. We retained 50 acres of frontage on Highway 77 to become Interstate 69. We started constructing the fairgrounds. We built the ball stadium on an initial 80 acres, and we began construction of the fairgrounds. Over the course of time, there were, you know, we retained that fronted- frontage on the highway, hoping something big would come. And there were requests from people to do travel centers and gas stations and all different, you know, all different kinds of things. And we just waited and waited and waited, and then we got the indication that it would be a good location for an outlet mall. And just to get you up to speed, the county did go out for closed, sealed bids on the 50 acres, and we got a bid of $50,500 per acre on- on the 50 acres. In addition, the outlet mall site bought an additional triangle that the county did not own to the north of that property. I was not involved in the negotiating for the usage of the property, but I think lawyers There was a property developer that Commissioner Ortiz knew, I can't- her name escapes me right now. What happened, that evolved into some deed restrictions on the property, and there was a closing, and they paid the money. They started building an outlet mall. And I think the outlet mall struggled at times. The number of stores fluctuated. And so ultimately, what, as a matter of fact, though, Belinda helped me find it, we had original restrictive covenants. Those are attached to your electronic backup. And there was one amendment to those restrictive covenants that occurred over time. And I- I think I heard this on the news, or Jason Green may have mentioned something. What happened, a local real estate firm, which has a local downtown office, I understood, bought the outlet mall property. I'm sorry?
Who bought the outlet mall property?
I know them as Stormwater Properties.
Stone Water.
So, I'm sorry.
Stone.
Stone Water Properties. And that's who Sherilyn Boyd represents. Their office is downtown on People Street. So I, you know, I don't know if they were familiar with the restrictive covenants when they made the purchase of the outlet mall.
Right.
But when they started, I suppose, developing their, you know, business plan and use of the- the property, they realized that some of the restrictive covenants were not- would not allow some of their ideas that they had for development of the property.
Right, so in your packets, there was a letter that was sent by Lock Lord on January 11th. They're the lawyers that represent Crossroads District, and you will see that they have asked for us to allow for variances and amendments and some deletions of some of these restrictions. I'm sure you've had a chance to read them, and they are absolutely in keeping with what you just said, Tyner. They're trying to make a go of it. It's very critical for our county to, and particularly for Robstown, to start recouping some of those sales tax they've just absolutely lost. And they've got some great ideas, and I'm going to ask Sherilyn to highlight, although they are listed in items one through eight in the letter dated January 11th, 2021. But Sherilyn, would you unmute and then go ahead and give the highlights and some of the reasons behind the- the request to- to seek these various amendments to the deed restrictions?
Judge, can I just, before you get Sherlin-
Of course.
I just want to ask Tyner. So Tyner, knowing the history that you do, I wouldn't- I wasn't involved in this either. So, I mean, I- so why- do you remember why the deed restrictions were put on in the first place?
That I do know, Your Honor. Commissioner, basically, the property that is- is in question was purchased with a certificate of obligation fund from- from the county, and the deed request was because the property was bought by the county through money through a bond issue. It was- it required certain restrictions and stuff to put it- be put on it, and we had to defuse part of our debt service to when we sold the property. So those could be put on there because of that particular issue, and I would request the attorneys to really look into that issue to make sure that's not something that we can forego.
So the question is, have we paid back those bonds?
Yeah, but there's still, there might be a deed restriction on it because the funds were used by purchasing of the property through a bond issue that the IRS might have some problems with. If you don't do it correctly, there may be something that- that's why there's some restrictions on it.
Okay, so, um, let's go through it anyway. We can always get right- we're going to have another special meeting, Sherilyn, most likely next week, if we can't tackle it all today. But let's get the background from your perspective, and then we're very lucky, Jenny, we've got Blakely Fernandez. This is all she does, is bond counsel work. I bet if you called her, she would be delighted to work with you and find out, research it, get back, you know, get back to you with an answer for us.
Well, and let me say before, and again, I'm not trying to cut Sherilyn off, but so my train of thought here was, in looking at these, and of course, I definitely want to hear from the commissioner who represents this area, but looking at these, the only one that stood out to me as offensive is not the right word, but might be a little problem out is the one where it says you can have a junkyard. I would think that one might be a little bit of a problem to- to put right there on that frontage road. But a lot of these, to me, looked reasonable. That's why I was asking Dale why we had to do it in the first place, but if you're saying there was a legitimate legal reason, then come back and do that. But yeah, I'd really like to hear from Mr. Maris on this, or just to see what his thoughts are. But that was the only one that I saw that was like junkyard. I went, "I don't know if I want to put that in there," but okay. Other than that, that would be it. Now, Sherilyn, go ahead. Hi, Sherilyn, how are you?
So Sherilyn, take us through one through eight very quickly, and that way we have background, and then we'll have the ability to get a legal, you know, consultation, and Commissioner Maris can also work with you if he has any specific concerns. But today is an opportunity for us to be able to hear from you for the first time.
Good afternoon. Thank you both, all, for allowing me to participate on this call and to speak about what we're going to be calling the Crossroads District. We think the owners that bought that project, Stone Water Properties, really believe in what we can do with that center by being able to diversify the strictly retail aspect of what- who we can lease to there. I think right now, the deed restrictions are very limited to retail only, and I think with 25% of office space. And I think we all have seen that that has not been very successful over the course of the last two and a half years. Tiffany, who works with me, Tiffany has a small slide presentation that we can kind of show you what we want to do there as far as being able to grow that into a business center, per se, where we can have restaurants and businesses and medical facilities, education classes, be able to open up the opportunities to bring all kinds of business there and different synergies there that focus on that crossroad intersection. Being able to partner with the county and do events and projects that are- coordinate with Richard Borchard Center. I really think as grouping our synergies with what you as the county want to do with Richard Borchard, I think we can grow that particular area and service regionally our community through there. Tiffany, do you have that presentation? You can pull up real quick and just kind of walk through that with them. You can pull up real quick and just kind of walk through that with them?
I certainly do. Do we, let me see if I can share my screen.
Let me see if Connie can help you do that. Can you allow her to? All right, you should be good now.
Okay.
She'll have to click the share screen button at the bottom of the Zoom meeting.
Sure. All right, so here we go. So this is a presentation, we actually were really fortunate in that we've been able to meet with Robstown City Council and also with the, with the NCDC. And I don't know if they put it in your packet, but we, we got a letter of support from the NCDC. And then last night at the Robstown City Council, they voted in favor of allowing us to rezone. So we'll kind of walk through a little bit of what we've shared with, with those two entities. Here's kind of just an overview of the, of the building. And you can see in the background here, there's the fairground. It's right next door. This is a view of exactly how many suites are available. And I'm sure all y'all have been there, but it's an enormous facility. And to kind of echo what Cheryl Lynn was saying, this is a real opportunity to bring a lot of different types of jobs to that region. And I think it dovetails really flawlessly with some of the other things that are happening simultaneously. I know we talked earlier about the I-69 Alliance Project. This is also great because it's part of the Robstown Opportunity Zone as well as the growth that's happening right now at the port. So there's, there's a lot of things happening right now that could be really conducive to getting this off the ground in a, in a terrific way. So here's a little bit about our vision. So one of the things that, that we want to do, not first and foremost, is job opportunities. You know, I grew up in a town a lot like Robstown. And what always happens is that kids grow up and they leave and they never come back because there's nowhere to work. So we want to, we want to be a part of, of turning that around. It's also an opportunity, I think, to create a destination point. There's, there's really not a lot of restaurants out there. There's not a lot of entertainment. But there are quite a number of terrific businesses, big businesses, that are already on the ground, like Lyondell and DDTrek and Baker Hughes. So this would open up that region to perhaps more of those kind of investments. Medical offices, I know right now y'all are having to do the COVID clinic at the fairground, which is amazing that you have that available because it's so huge. But what about smaller minor emergencies, sports, physicals, orthognostia, you know, all those kinds of things for the, the people of that community? Obviously, we want to keep retail. We absolutely do. Education and athletics, there's some buildings out there that are huge that would be terrific for a gym or a gymnastics center or even partnering with universities. A lot of universities have branch campuses. So maybe Texas A&amp;M would, would want to put something there that would be kind of an outreach for that area. Obviously, industrial space also could be valuable. And when I say industrial, I, I don't want anybody to get the, I know the junkyard word was, was mentioned earlier. We don't want that look either. What we're trying to do is make it so that we don't have to turn anybody away that's reasonable and that's in keeping with the vision. We'd really like to have something kind of along the same lines as like a La Contera, where it's, it's diverse, multifaceted. And then of course, a hotel. Hilton did purchase a lot there, I believe, and then they didn't build on it. So maybe we can get that moving, which would open up a lot more opportunity for things that are happening at the fairground. Which brings us to special events. We definitely don't want to step on Cotton Fest or Buck Days, but I think it'd be a lot of fun to have an annual music festival out there. Maybe we could put it in between those two events where there was something, maybe, you know, different times of year, holidays and civic events. I know in the past they had SantaCom, they've had some little parades, presentations similar to what the, the girls from Flower Bluff did earlier. I think things like that could be a lot of fun. The architecture is beautiful. We're having it re-landscaped, so it's a great photo op for those kind of events. So that, that's kind of our vision in a nutshell. And, and we welcome any questions that y'all might have for us.
John? I'm kind of looking for you, man.
I mean, I'm taking this in because this is the first time I've heard of it or seen it. So it's a little disappointing to say the least. So to be nice, I'm going to ask that we table this item at least for a week, if not longer. Because I just think, how can we go with a project of this scale without being given the courtesy to be contacted on this item? Very disappointing, very disappointing. I'll, I'll just leave it at that because I'm not too happy right now.
I'll second if that's a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
I apologize, Commissioner Maras. It was not our intent to exclude you. We had every intention to reach out to you. We had a meet and greet, thought you had been invited. I'm sorry, I could not attend because I had a family member with COVID. But it was not in any way we, our intent was to contact you.
Well, and, and now you will, and you'll get a chance to, he'll get a chance to review it. And, and as I looked at the packet, you know, obviously, just for food for thought from my perspective, the height restrictions and the, I mean, number one, number two. The only one that I saw was number three, just because there should be, you know, due consideration given to whether or not that's in keeping with, as you said, the ambiance or the environment, you know, with regards to, it says, labor camp and junkyards. Yeah, there's a motion, but I'm having a discussion. Yeah, I'm just talking to her about it so she can have some, some feedback here as, as I think that's a good, good opportunity. But anyway, that, that number three is one that I think that we should be able to, to do. And then, but the rest of it, obviously, is the, the outlets have been sitting idle for, really, even though they were operational for a long time. And it sounds like the city council weighed in on it. And, and so we've got, we've got to get a chance to have everybody give a chance to, to look at it and digest it. And I would definitely reach out to Commissioner Maras. And the rest of us will, will keep, keep studying the, the opportunities. But I'm excited that, that Crossroads is definitely doing something with it. I mean, we cannot, we cannot revive that economy unless we revive this major investment. In fact, the city of Robstown put a major investment. I, I've sat on the, the Industrial Commission over there as well as the RADC. And they need this project to be resurrected. So we want to hear more details and we'll wait till, till we get some, some feedback from, from the commissioner. But at this point, there's a table, a motion to table, and I think I heard the second from Commissioner Chesney. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So we have another meeting coming up on February the 10th. We may have one in between. And let's see what you do, guys can do to, to, you know, share all of your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl Lynn, thank you so much.
You have great ideas.
Okay, um, in addition to, we've got one more. Remember, item number four was tabled earlier. And item number five is always on the agenda to make certain that we take care of our comprehensive disaster finance issues and those policies. Dale, I think you might have said we needed more time last time. Do we have anything this time?
Well, we do have one particular person that submitted some time. As Melissa is saying, we've had four major events going through the fairgrounds for vaccines. So we haven't received a lot of activity reports. Y'all might have been receiving some complaints about my staff being very picky on what we, what we accept and not accept. And the reason why we're doing that is because TDM and FEMA are very restrictive on us as well.
We agree.
So we're trying to provide them with an example of what it, what
What it looks like.
be required. However, not every department's the same. So it's not, it's not as easy to say, and here's a sample for everybody to use because everybody's different. But we do have one particular person that has submitted an activity report and, and she does it very well, and that's Rebecca from Social Services. 17.25 hours for a total cost of $654.12. The rest will be probably bringing up on you for the next court once we start getting some activity reports. So for this particular activity, we're requesting the, the payment for 17.25 hours at a cost of $654.12.
One more time, I'm writing it down?
17.25 hours.
Seventeen, got it.
At a cost of $654.12.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
And what, tell me what it was for again? I'm sorry.
Pardon?
What was the specific? I know all the, I heard all the explanation, then I lost on the specific.
This was all the, the, we had a large outing for the fairgrounds at the, for the vaccine sites. We had the last four days that Rebecca and her staff were definitely out there. What we're bringing you is just exempt employees. So there usually won't be a lot to begin with because the regular employees would get paid overtime regardless. But there's still need to be, supply us our activity reports so we can submit these for reimbursement when the time comes. But we have received several from Rebecca for, for her, her work at the, at the vaccine site. And that's what we're requesting for, for payment. We know Edward and his staff was there, Juan and his staff was there. I know Melissa and her staff was there. However, we haven't received the activity reports. Or if we have, they've been very lacking in detail. And with the fight we're having right now with, with TIDAM on what we've submitted for the CARES Act on the testing, we're very picky of what we, what we, what we allow. So we are allowing this particular one for Rebecca for the time she's spent at the vaccine site.
Because hours already been done, right?
Yes.
So this, we're not voting here on the next two weeks, right?
I can understand you.
We're not voting on the next two weeks here. We just voted the hours already been done.
The hours that have already been done and the hours will be coming because of the work they've done the last two weeks. And if you, if this is for what we have, so we, next week we may have some more hours. That was for the previous two weeks, we're already in because they have not submitted their activity reports. But, but the next question we have is, is do we want to continue tracking the costs of, of the overtime after this point in time? And that would be the second question of this, of this request.
Well, I approve the first one, but not the second one.
Okay, um, let's take the first one first, please. That's the 654, and forgive me the cents again. 12 cents, okay. So we're going to approve $654.12 in overtime that's already been performed. And I've got a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, I've got a, thank you, multiple seconds. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the overtime that needs to be done to continue is, is also, I'll make that motion to make certain that we keep these vaccine sites. We get there at 4:00 AM in the morning to start at 8:00 AM. So if you want people to receive vaccines, there's always going to be a possibility. There will be some overtime. It is eligible for FEMA, it is eligible for TIDAM, it is eligible for the future stimulus bill based upon the proposal that was certainly set forth by the new administration. So I'd like to make that motion.
And this would be for the exempt employees?
The exempt employees. They're covered by federal law.
Yes.
And so I need a second to, to make sure that that, that gets taken care of.
Hey Judge, can I just say something for a second?
Of course, where's she, where'd she come from? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just, I've been standing out there and almost missed it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to, to take a second to, to bring up the, the overtime.
Yes.
So you actually kind of said it earlier, which is, we're in a phase right now like it was in the beginning, where the expectations for every employee, for everybody, is just, it's just beyond, right? It's just beyond. So if we are as busy or actually busier than we were before, I, I would like to just kind of pump this to you to consider bringing back the overtime for department heads as you see our operations slow down or fizzle out to, to decide when to discontinue it. But I do think we are at a critical point like we were in the beginning of this disaster where it's warranted. And I just wanted to express that, give you time to, to think about it. I almost missed it by a, by a millisecond, but I really thought that it was important enough for me in this busy day to come down here and just say, I think it should be thought about.
Yeah, and that's, that was, you timed it perfectly. I just made the motion to do just that. You know, obviously, our policy requires two weeks kind of coming in and reviewing it. And so we have approved that, which already has been expended. And this would be for the next two weeks. And so I've got a motion on the floor and looking for a second.
I just got one discussion. Those that worked today or tomorrow, like say for instance, a vaccine that worked four hours overtime, five hours overtime, why can't they just take off the next day? Because you don't have vaccines every day.
You know, we, we, we went through a lot of this in the beginning. And I, I think that it's difficult for you to, to see.
I'm just asking that question.
It's not four or five hours, sir.
Well, I don't care what it is, but why can't they take off the next day?
Because we have to keep planning, we have to keep running.
Well, you don't need the whole group to plan.
It hasn't stopped, sir, for, for us since the beginning. I know for some people it fades in and out, but for us, it has not stopped from the beginning. This is 10 months. So, and it's more than four hours, it's more than 10 hours, it's more than 20 hours.
And I understand that.
And it should be, it should be, even if you didn't do anything about it, please recognize it for the sake of your employees.
I am recognizing, but I'm just saying.
Please recognize it.
What happened to management here? Who's managing this?
Because we're in an impossible situation. We need 40,000 more people than we have. We just keep working with the same crew.
Melissa, yeah, just don't, let's let us vote. Can I tell you, he doesn't understand it, he's never understood it, he's never been for the employees on this issue.
I don't work, I don't, I don't have a clue.
And, and he's, and he's not going to understand it clearly. So the point of the matter is, is that this, this is an example of, quite frankly, it's an embarrassment to the county that we do not support our employees when we're working 24/7 to save lives. And it's not about management.
Because you are awesome, man, you are awesome. You are awesome.
No, our employees are awesome, sir.
They are, I agree with you.
They are.
But you know, you put in this show that we don't care.
No, you, you do that all by yourself, sir. You do that all by yourself. Your words are hurtful, they're, they're, they're absolutely embarrassing.
You're very lucky to have some of the people that you have here.
Guys, I appreciate you guys every single day.
Then let's show it here. I have a motion on the floor to make sure that the people that are keeping people alive in this county have the opportunity to have overtime paid to them when it's actually reimbursable. If the federal government recognizes it, sir, and the state government recognizes, by God, this court should recognize it. I have a motion on the floor and I'd like a second, please, for overtime. There's not going to be a second for overtime?
I have a second, I need a, a discussion.
Okay, I've got a second and let's have discussion.
So I guess last week, was there any overtime because of, or no, not last week, this week? Wait, when did we have Martin Luther King? Last week, right?
Yes.
Last week. So that would have been a week, was there still overtime accumulated? Or would it all have been converted over to comp time? Or how did that work?
So the, the overtime that's been experienced, we had our
Let me ask Dale, because I, I know that
Do you mean like it's a holiday?
Yeah, I want to, let me get the, the opinion on that. So how, first of all, how does that work as far as overtime and comp time? When you have weeks like that that are not a full week?
Figure time, the only, only one where we're in question is, is the exempt employees that would not normally accrue overtime. So for this particular emergency situation, once the disaster accounting finance policy went into effect, they actually become non-exempt employees, which means they're qualified for overtime. And the policy says overtime must be paid, cannot be accrued. It must be paid in full as, as cash, it cannot be comped at all, so.
So how does that work for our employees? Do they get, are they getting overtime even like say last, for working last week? Because I'm sure they maybe hit more than 40 hours even being off on Martin Luther King.
Majority of our regular employees that, that, that worked the event are already qualified for overtime because they're considered non-exempt employees because they're not a department head or a superior or a supervisor, which we consider a salaried position. There's only, in that particular case, at the fairgrounds, we probably had maybe eight to 10 totally exempt employees. Melissa's exempt, Edward's exempt, Sly is exempt. I know Rebecca's exempt from normal hours of overtime. So it's not a lot of people we're bringing to you for qualifications for payment because other employees would already be paid overtime.
So every employee that worked, no matter what department, they should have been paid?
Yes.
Then overtime and not billed comp time?
Correct.
Because I heard differently, so that's a concern.
This, this particular event with, is considered a disaster event to be able to be reimbursed and must be paid. We can't reimburse something that's comped. If it's comped, then we basically lose it because it cannot be reimbursed.
So then that information was wrong, then? Then the employees should have been receiving overtime?
Correct. We've instructed my staff and payroll that if they worked overtime during this particular time and, and they actually worked the event that showed through a, a activity report, they were paid overtime and not comped, there was no comp. So we must, we have an activity report that goes along with the payroll that shows that they were paid.
They were paid, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, um, okay. We have a All right, um, okay, um, we have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention?
Abstention.
One abstention? Okay, two abstentions. All right, um, the next one is, um, Public Works B1, we tabled, the next one is B2, and Juan is here to talk about, uh, plans and specifications for emergency generators at the courthouse jail complex for an engineering service contract.
Judge Commissioners, um, Public Works is recommending the selection of, uh, NRG Engineering to prepare plans and specifications for the emergency generators for the courthouse and the jail. Um, the design would include, uh, two, uh, natural gas generators, uh, there'll be, uh, 1,000 megawatts, two 1,000 megawatt generators, and, uh, this is for the design of those two gas generators.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Uh, the one, three looks similar, but it's not, because it's for the annex.
That's correct, Judge. Uh, the second one is for, for NRG, uh, recommending NRG to prepare the plans and specifications, uh, for the emergency, emergency generators for the McKenzie Jail Annex. Um, we're recommending, uh, for, for, to approve the, the contract with NRG, uh, and this is a, for also for, um, a gas generator for, for the annex. So we're recommending, uh, order a contract.
Uh, motion, okay, motion and a second, and all second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. You have a budget change, thanks Juan.
Thanks Judge Commissioners.
You have a budget change order number seven. Oh, by the way, Commissioner Hernandez wanted to know if the air handlers, uh, could be adjusted, and I said I would check with you, so after the, I think you've already made the adjustment, I feel different.
Yes, Judge.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate that. We're moving on to a budget change order number seven, uh, C1, C1, and...
Yes, yes, Your Honor, this is budget change order number seven for our fiscal year. After we finalize our budget plans for this last fiscal year, it was determined that several of the items that, uh, we've had in, in, for internal, our, our Department of Information Technology, where, where should have been actually coded as a professional services, not as a maintenance and repair of these equipment. So all we're doing is transferring the budget numbers from a maintenance repair to a professional services, and this will be rectified during, when we do the next budget process.
So moved.
Okay, and I've got a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, uh, I made a mistake earlier when Dr. Shaker was on, I should have kept him on for item number two, we may have to get him back on the line, I'm sorry about that, Julie, I, you know, just, I said I was going to do it, and then I, I forgot. So we'll start with the first one, which is to reclassify a senior administrative clerk into a senior clerk position, and reclassify a court, excuse me, a court clerk attorney general position into supervisor two with the district clerk's office, and, um...
So moved.
Okay.
It's very little fiscal impact is the reason, and it's just a reclassification, so I'm not just doing it flippantly, I mean, it's $126 worth of cost or something like that, so...
Okay, well that's for this year, but does anyone have the fiscal impact for next year?
There'll be a small impact next year when we, uh, actually make the adjustments, and it, and, well, we know where there's going to be a lot of change in, in, in people coming and going, and, and some of the, uh, the senior staff might leave, and that'll drop some stuff down. So theoretically, if it's this small of an impact, I don't, I don't believe there'll be any impact next year.
That's great to hear, and, and just to say, I recommend, and is District Clerk Ann Lorenson, right? Ann, do you want to take the podium and just say, I, you recommend it as well? I know it's yours, but I'm just throwing you the softball.
Oh, on the reclassification?
Yeah.
Um, yes, um, I want to recommend that reclassification, um, it, I'm, one of my other projects, other than just doing the documents out of the, out at the warehouse, is also to look at all of the positions in my office, especially my supervisors, and make sure that they're all on the same page, and their job descriptions are accurate. So this is my first opportunity to do that, and, um, the, the overage that the county would be responsible for is only $127, and so that's something I can easily absorb into my budget. So, um, I don't think this should be a hardship on the, on the county at all.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Ann, and I think...
It is so good to see you, Judge.
I know, it's like, hello, real person, I know who you are.
And it's good to see everybody else, too.
Oh, it is, and so we just had a motion, we just need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I know you'll work with the paperwork and get all that to us.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the next one is Dr. Shakir, but I, I don't see him on, so let me go to number three, and I'll come back, okay?
Judge, this is Julie.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Shaker's not going to be able to make it back on?
No worries, but you can help, and, and he kind of laid the predicate already.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, he really did, but, uh, this, this item, Julie, is to get the, that extra autopsy technic, technician, and, uh, in the ME's department, and it's funded with all of this, these extra dollars that we have, is that correct?
That's correct, he currently has a vacancy for his Assistant Chief Deputy Medical Examiner, and with the savings for that depart, for that position, in October, November, December, definitely pays for that position already. And in the future, for the next fiscal year, if we need to get monies from temporary money in his department, we can move that around next year.
Can we pay with the money he makes from Isalgo?
Dale?
That is additional revenue coming in from Isalgo County that can cover the cost, and when we, uh, factor this in next year during budget cycle, if this is a position that, that will be remaining, that additional revenue will pay for that cost, yes.
If that revenue goes away, then this position could go away.
That's correct.
Right, I mean, so everybody's clear, I mean, it's...
That's with every position in the entire county.
No, no, I, no, I just like to say it.
You got it.
Let's leave it in ten. But you anticipate if we keep this volume, then it should be paying for it.
Right, way, and way, way over, pay 16 is one of our lowest, unfortunately, pay grades.
Well, like you're saying, we, we processed around 50 autopsies, if they're all at the $2,000 range, that's, that's, that's quite a bit of money. Over $100,000, you're not there, and we're only talking about a $3,000 position, so...
I think he said, like, 200 something on the, on the line.
To date, to date.
Right, so...
There, other stuff he's done, so yes, and again, it depends on the fees he's charged, some are $2,000, some are, and you have a cost, company of, of the fees that are charged, and could be more than a few things, so...
Yeah, for, in fact, that exhibit that Ginny was talking about, that A and B, look at it, it's an, it's an itemization of everything, from every toxicology, everything we do that's, that's different, that, that's unique, is itemized with a, with a dollar amount. Okay, thank you, Julie, anything else we need to know?
I definitely recommend that we approve this.
Okay, I've got a motion.
I do see Dr. Shaker.
And a second.
Dr. Shaker's on.
Okay.
I make the motion.
All right, Dr. Shaker, we have a motion on the floor, uh, from Commissioner Gonzalez, all second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I apologize.
You go to work.
You're getting a little choked up over this one, Judge?
You can go to work now, Doctor.
Yeah, sorry, Doctor.
We just wanted you to hear that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and we say aye, and then opposed, same sign. Okay, Doctor, that autopsy technician position is there, you do have savings and revenue, we just got to keep up the revenue, if you know what we mean. In other words, you know, you, you, you need the position, because you have all this extra work, but if you didn't have the work, you wouldn't need the position, and the court just wanted you to hear that.
I did not hear well, I'm sorry, Judge.
I was stating that the, the commission has approved your autopsy tech, and primarily because of the fact that you have both savings and revenue, and we just wanted to point that out, that the revenue is what's really motivating us, because next year, even, you may not have savings, because we want to fill that vacant position of yours. But the revenue will carry the day, and we want to keep up that revenue.
Okay, so for, for this year?
You're good.
Will it be feasible to have a help?
Yes, that, yes, sir, that's what we just passed, we just passed you, you're, you're good. The autopsy technician was approved, yes, sir.
You got it.
Thank you, sorry to make you come back in.
No, anytime, thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners, have a blessed day all.
Thank you. All righty, number three, discuss and consider an assistant jail liaison, and Mary Lee, you're here today for this, um, and I'll let you kind of introduce it with our court coordinator, and it's, um, department number 3,300 here, so we're going to move, uh, we're going to delete a position and create a position, tell us about it, uh, Mary Lee, it's, it's a good swap.
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, with the implementation of the indigent defense coordinator positions, we've had some staff moving, so I had my chief jail liaison become one of my indigent defense coordinators, a clerk from the district clerk's office became the second. I eliminated one of my 30-hour-per-week part-time employees, and I am trying to staff the second jail coordinator in the magistrate department. These positions work hand in hand, it's going to be, I think Julie, I'm going to rely upon Julie and Dale to, to tell me that I'm saying the right thing, but I think that this is going to be about a $17,000 savings. This works in concert with the indigent defense coordinators, as a matter of fact, we've already submitted our first quarterly report, and, uh, according to the terms and conditions of that grant, our first reimbursement opportunity is next month. So I would respectfully request that you all give me the opportunity to fully staff that department, so I can move forward. Indigent Defense is doing a great job, they're, they're going gangbusters, and if we can eliminate one position, actually eliminate two positions, and create a different one, that way I can have two people doing, getting equal pay for equal work in the magistrate department, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
You said the key word, saving, saving.
Yes, sir, there is a distinct savings.
I move.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, is, uh, on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, okay. The next one is...
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mary Lee, for coming down. The next one is creating a legal secretary, it's a SEJIS position, and it's got, um, benefits associated with this position, and the total is $28,966.68. There is, uh, no fiscal impact at this time, if the office is allowed to use salary savings to date, there will be, obviously, we'll consider it in our budget cycle for the following year, tell us about it, uh, Angelica. Hernandez from the DA's office here to tell us more about it.
Good morning, so the legal, I'm sorry, I'm late, we were actually on a SEJIS task force call right now, trying to get everything ready. We've decided to meet weekly on that, because we don't want to find ourselves in a bind, Judge.
And just remind everybody again, you and I talk about this all the time, but it's nice to remind the public who's watching about the new rule that's taken, taken effect, and why we're really here today. Uh, I think it'd be important that they understand what kind of burdens we're under now.
So besides the combined percentage over the past five years, where we have to have a 90% compliance, meaning the DPS side of the criminal justice information system reporting matches the clerk's side, matches the DA's side, uh, matches the jail side, so it's like everybody having to make sure that every single case that's been disposed of over the past five years has perfectly, um, matching disposition, uh, information. So we have that 90% mark we have to reach, but in addition, they are now saying that we have to report convictions into the system within five days. And that is a, a huge task for us, uh, because it requires that the attorney come down, submit the disposition folder to the secretary, the secretary then creates the judgment, the judgment is then reviewed again by the attorney, the attorney then gives it back to the secretary, they submit it up to the court for the judge's signature, that clerk has to get it in front of the judge, the judge has to sign it, goes back to the clerk for entry, and then comes back to our office for entry, so you're talking about multiple departments, multiple floors, and then it has to get over to the jail, because they also have to enter it on their side for purposes of disposition to either state jail, or to, you know, TDCJ, um, jail, or to the actual Nuasis County jail. So to do all of that in five days, most of us can't get emails answered in five days, so it's a, it's a big undertaking. But the hook that they have is that Nuasis County will not be able to apply for any grants that come out of the office of the governor if we are not in compliance. So, yeah, that's...
Madison Hill, we're good.
So, I mean, that's an infinite amount of money to lose, and in, I mean, because we don't even know what's going to become available, and so we need this help, we're asking to utilize salary savings, I've worked with Julie on it, and I've worked with, uh, Mr. Ashley and Lisa, and so we are asking to utilize salary savings to date. I know last fiscal year, I think we gave back at least $200,000, $300,000 in salary savings, so we, we're good for it, but we're just asking to use what we have so far to create this position, which is necessary for the betterment of Nuasis County.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great, um, position with no fiscal impact, I think, did I hear a motion?
And a second.
I thought I heard it. And a second, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, and then stick around, because you've got item number five, which is, uh, the felony one juvenile position, it's a reclass to, um, from a 31 to a 35, uh, but we also were able to do some great things, and there's no fiscal impact, but it's got a tremendous impact to the juvenile courts.
May we take up items five and six simultaneously, Judge?
Go ahead and talk about them both, yeah, I'll have to vote on them separate, but go ahead and take them together.
So I don't know if Judge McCoy has joined the meeting yet, I think he was going to try to jump on.
Not yet, I can text him.
He, if you can, Judge, he was in the middle of the hearing, he actually came to the office yesterday, he's in 100% support of our requests, not the financial part, obviously, that's within your purview only, but in terms of why we're asking for this. So we currently have two juvenile prosecutors that are dedicated to Court Five, both of them are classified as juvenile felony ones. We recently lost Cassie Bonilla, she was a felony one, um, and we couldn't keep her because we, we couldn't match the salary opportunity she had going somewhere else. Right now, Corpus Christi Police Department just put out, and we just met with them, they just put out their 40 most violent offenders, uh, within Nuasis County, 80% of them are juveniles, let that sink in. They are under the age of 17 committing murders, aggravated assaults with deadly weapons, we have several new violent gangs within Nuasis County, they are all juvenile run. And so the felony one prosecutors in the juvenile side are now prosecuting what my felony threes, fours, and fives do over here on the district court side. So if I'm going to be able to assist in crime prevention, I need the same caliber attorney willing to go over to juvenile, and right now, I'd have to give them a pay decrease.
Right.
In order to get them to the juvenile side. And so I am asking to reclassify, so that I can attract more seasoned prosecutors over to the juvenile side, because they are now prosecuting murders, capital murders, aggravated assaults with deadly weapons, um...
Judge, yeah, second for both of them, I'd, I'd move, I'd move for both of them, Judge, yeah, I mean, if that's okay, or...
The salary savings accumulated.
Yeah, I'm, I get it, we have to deal with it in the budget, I get it, but I totally agree, yeah, we'll have to, I know.
They're going to be, we'll work with it in the new budget, it's just going to be important, uh, to do that, so, um...
We appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, let's do item number five, uh, for the record, it's, uh, the attorney Thank you. Let's do item number five for the record. It's the attorney felony one position, reclassifying to attorney five. I've got a motion and a second with Chesney and Gonzalez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. On item number six, it's the attorney felony number one juvenile position, 31 to attorney three, pay group 33. I would like a...
Motion and...
The same motion and second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign.
And I just wanted to say, you know, part of the reason that this is easy for me to do is twofold. One, I think you're 100% right. And two, I really appreciate how you and the district attorney work with the court on those budget savings and really try to be conscientious of that. So, you make this an easy process by the way you approach it. And it really, it's never been a bad idea that y'all brought forward, and I appreciate that. And I really appreciate these efforts because none of us want to spend money that we don't have to. But we know none, we know the same thing comes out of your office, and that really makes a difference. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge. May I be excused?
You may. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, believe it or not, that concludes, but I'm looking double-checking, we didn't... That concludes our regular agenda in its entirety. And I'm now giving notice that the Commissioners' Court is electing to go into executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 555, excuse me, 551 of the Texas Government Code, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act authorized by government codes, Vernon's sections in the Texas Codes, 551, 071, 072, 073, 74, 745, 76, 8687. And we are doing so to consult with our attorney for matters including relating to litigation, real property, gifts, personnel matters, termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion, the executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in open session, take an action. And we will come back on the record after we deliberate. And so, the time for the clerk is 2:04 PM. We're gabbling out, 2:04 PM. If everybody would exit the courtroom, we will stay with the county attorney. We appreciate it. It's just two items. Interesting. Okay, so we are back on the record, testing the volume. Time is 2:17 PM. Back on the record. We're back from executive session. We have two items that we do need to take action on. Commissioners, item number A is a settlement of Shoreline Sandwich Company's property damage claim. And do I have a motion to settle this claim? And do I have an amount? Would you remind us, county attorney, it's $1,000? Is that your motion, sir? And I've got a second with Chesney. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And also, we have an item B to ratify the hiring of outside counsel, Travis Obregon and Morales, in the matter of Evaristo Garcia. And I've got a motion to ratify, and I'll second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, so that concludes, ladies and gentlemen, our January 20 regular meeting. And I would like to adjourn in memory and would ask if any Commissioners have any that they would like to share with us at this time. Commissioner Hernandez? No Commissioner Modis?
No, Judge, I don't have anybody.
Okay, Commissioner Modis?
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Melissa Ann Davis, 52 years old, actually my first cousin. My mom's one of her older brother's daughter, and he had passed years ago. And so, this was his oldest daughter, and she's survived by two sons. And so, it was, she had some health issues, but it happened very quickly and unexpectedly. And so, my condolences to my cousin Michelle and to their mother on the passing of Melissa Davis. Thank you.
It's been a hard month for the family, I'm afraid. Our condolences as well. Sometimes it's been hard. Commissioner Chesney, do you have any today?
No, ma'am.
And Commissioner Gonzalez, do you have any?
No, ma'am.
And so, I'm grabbing my obituary here for Antonio Perez, a very dear friend. And Antonio, if it's all right, I'll just read the obituary here. He did pass away on January 13. He was a loving husband, a father of three and a grandfather of seven. He died at the age of 91, and he was born in San Jose, which is near Lynn, Texas. And he grew up in Edinburgh, and he attended school there in Edinburgh. And he was actually a great veteran of our United States Army. He was a corporal during the Korean War from 1952 to 1954. He was with the 821st Engineer Aviation Battalion of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. He was always very proud of that. He had a BBA and a master's from Texas A&amp;I, well, now we call it Tamuk in Kingsville. He was also a doctor. He had a doctorate of education, school administration, and supervision from the University of Houston. And he served with CCISD for many years. Of course, the love of his life was Alicia, Alicia Perez, formerly Salinas. And of course, as most of us know, his pride and joy were his grandchildren. He had a passion for traveling and, of course, traveled all over the country, in Central America, Europe, Australia, even New Zealand. He was a Eucharistic minister at my church, Corpus Christi Cathedral, and he was a member of the Equestrian Order of the Holy Sepulcher of Jerusalem and the Knights of Columbus. He enjoyed socializing with friends, a good beer, margarita, gardening, fishing, taking evening walks with Alicia on Ocean Drive. He was known for his kind heart, gentle spirit, and absolute adoration of his wife, Alicia. I can certainly attest to all of those amazing attributes. He was a great Corpus Christi and a great citizen of Nuaces County. Alicia, please know that we are thinking of you here in Nuaces County Commissioners' Court today, and we dedicate this adjournment in memory to all those that we have honored with our words today. Thank you very much, and this does conclude our regular meeting. The time for our adjournment is 2:21 PM. Thank you. And mics, please off.